Good evening there, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. Today is October 19th, 2021. Our thoughtful today is integrity is choosing your thoughts and actions based on values rather than personal gain. Anonymous. Guys, I want to ask everyone if you would, please put your cell phones on vibrate, please, or silent. I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Cowan if he would to lead us in our invocation tonight. And I'm gonna ask Commissioner Sanders if she would lead us in our pledge tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Let's pray. My Father in Heaven, Lord, we thank you, dear God, for your blessings. Oh, we thank you for our county, Lord. And we just pray that we have the right attitude and the right demeanor, Lord God, to do what's best interest of Newton County. And Lord, we just thank you for the blessings that we've had here. We're blessed more than any other county, I think, around Atlanta. And Lord, we just ask you to continue that. We ask, Lord God, that you watch over our employees, make sure they're safe. Lord, we just pray that you give us wisdom as we make decisions for our county. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Hey, Commissioner Henderson, would you like to put that on silent, sir? Commissioner Sanders. If we will please stand for the pledge. Thank you so much. Next, we have the agenda adoption. Commissioners, we would look at the consent agenda under item D. D? Those are the dates that we're, the months, November and December. I'm gonna put the date on there. The first one is 11/2/21. 11/2/21. And the second one is 12/7/21. Those are the dates that we'll be going to one meeting. That's item D under the consent agenda. Item D. That's 11/2/21. No, ma'am, we're putting the dates down. We're putting the dates down. And the second one is 12/7/21. That's 11/2/21 and 12/7/21. That's under consent agenda. Item D. That's 11/2/21 and 12/7/21. Those are the changes I have. Guys, I seek a motion that we approve, please. I'm sorry, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Item number 14, there was a typo there that should read, "The Sewer Aisment Deed Conveyance from Newton County and not from Neely Farms." I think we just need to correct that.
Is it, okay, okay, okay.
It's correct, homie.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry. I had, thank you.
I had a question, Commissioner Sanders. It's not more so of a question. I would like to take item C, Cornishian, to make that an agenda item because it doesn't state where the funding is coming from. And I would like to just ask those questions in regards to the Cornishian project.
The who now?
The item C under the consent agenda.
The Cornish tree?
Yeah, we can make that a agenda item and not put it under consent agenda so we can discuss that item.
You know it's a grant though, you know that right? Can I? So there's a motion on the, there's a motion on the floor to remove item C and make it a discussion item. Is there any, you are making that a motion right? Yeah, so there's a motion on the floor to make item C under the consent agenda a regular discussion item. Is there a second for that? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Commissioner Henderson.
Ms. Chairman, I would like to ask that the board add another agenda item to the, to the agenda and for discussion for the American Rescue Fund and funding to have a discussion on it.
Let me finish up, let me finish up this one. Guys, we're making item C, 13A. I mean, 13B, I'm sorry. 13B. 13B. Well, 13A, we'll make it 13A. Commissioner Henderson, go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Chairman. I would like to make, I guess, make a motion that the board add another agenda item to the agenda for the $10 million of American Rescue Fund to have discussion concerning, hopefully, the disbursement of those funds. I'd like to make any form of motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion? I got discussion. Mr. Kerr, we already have discussed this and a RFP went out for, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright. Any more discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
There was something, there was mention that it was in a RFP out, but it has nothing to do with the fact of us having a discussion as far as how those funds should be dispersed within the community. And just let me say, I've been given, like most, well, like some of you, I have been getting a lot of telephone calls. And the peoples in the community are hurting. They are wanting us to use that money to help them with their utility bills, to help them with several other things in the community that they believe, and I believe, that the money was sent down for us to do. So having discussion has nothing to do with having a RSP. It's just talking about how we would want to disburse that money. And they want it to be disbursed as soon as possible.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All in favor? All opposed? It passed 4-1. We're gonna make that item, 15A. Anything else? Anything else? Guys, I seek a motion that we approve the agenda with the changes that have been made.
So moved.
It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passed at 5:00. Thank you. Our next on the agenda is citizens' comments. This opportunity, we let citizens come up and make comments about agenda topics only. You may comment this time, please state your name and your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so. You have three minutes to do so.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Barbara Ferman, and I live off of Woodland Ridge Circle. I'm commenting on-
I'm sorry, can you, can you please speak into the mic, please?
Oh, okay. My name is Barbara Ferman. I live off of Woodland Ridge Circle. When I was at that last meeting, the one before, and the lady with the alligators, that's over by where I live, and you forgot, I know you didn't talk about it, but that is something that is bothering me. You have a school directly across the street.
You got, I'm sorry, ma'am, it gotta be agenda topics only.
It has-
It had to be agenda topics only.
I can only talk about it if it's on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am, unless you wanna wait to the end. If you wanna wait to the end, you could talk about it.
I'll be back then.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Ashanti Bell. I live on Moore Street. I believe you stated that you were making it, Commissioner, item number 15A. In regards to that, I am a single mother here in Newton County. I've lived in this county for over 20 years, from a little girl up until now. And I have currently a utility bill with the city. The city is high. And I'm a single parent. I was sick back in July, which is something beyond my control, that did not allow me to be able to take care of any of my obligations because I had to, I was bedridden. So my lights are due to be cut off any day now, which is, it was today. So, I mean, with that, like Commissioner Henderson said, we, the citizens, need that money to help us not to, not that we wanna go frolic and have fun and do things, but like, I'm standing here as a single parent telling you, I'm in need of that money because I just started back working from being sick. And that's just something that I feel like should be considered. Not only that, I was forced kinda into my living situation by some other things, but needless to say, that money is needed to help out the citizens of Newton County.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. Next is the chairman's report. Excited today to have Ms. Dana Herring with us today. Ma'am, if you would, please come up. You're in the Creekview Heights Homeowners Association. If you guys would come on up. We do recognize that this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And this community is doing something a little different to bring awareness to it. And we wanna give you opportunity to talk about what you guys are doing. Thank you so much for being here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good afternoon. I'm Dana Herring, president of Creekview Heights, which we have now turned our name into Pinkview Heights for the month of October. This month, we decided to change out our porcelain lights to the color pink in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month to bring about awareness. And I brought about some of our homeowners within the subdivision as well, just as support. But we started the initiative, again, just to show support, to do something different. And once we started posting our pictures, I've had folks from Columbus, Georgia, Florida, Decatur, La Cuenca, reaching out saying, they went and purchased lights as well, just to jump on board with the lights and the initiative that was set forth. This past Saturday, we also did our second annual Breast Cancer Awareness Walk. And we started at the top of our subdivision and walked all the way around and came back to the very end. And we tried to do a candlelight vigil, but the wind was not cooperating, so we still had our candles. But it was a great turnout, as you see. We did have our District 3 Commissioner come and walk with us for the second year in a row. We also had Sheriff Brown and his team show up as well for the second year in a row and walk with us as well. So that's all I have. I'm just gonna open the floor for someone else that may have something to say.
My name is Javon Sullivan. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
And I just wanted to say I have a privilege of living in this genuine community almost 20 years. And it was definitely an honor to support the awareness of breast cancer. My mother-in-law is a 20-year, this year survivor. And definitely an opportunity for me, for one, to grow out my beard in recognition of that, but for two, to acknowledge those who have fought and survived and those who have lost their lives to this disease. So it was truly an honor, and we're just glad to be a part of this, this community.
Thank you so much. Guys, we greatly appreciate what you, what you guys are doing in this community. As we know that, as we know, breast cancer is alive and well here. And there's so many people that has been affected by both men and women. And, you know, we want to, tonight, we want to thank you for bringing awareness to the community in a different way and highlighting your lights in your homes in pink. I did have an opportunity to drive through the community, and you guys are doing a really good job, so we commend you tonight for what you're doing. Guys, I think we do deserve them a round of applause. Please, thank you so much. Thank you guys so much for being here. Please, ma'am, keep us, keep us abreast of what you guys are doing in the community. We would definitely like to continue to highlight you guys as you bring awareness to our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, sir. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. We have a few slides tonight. First slide, please, Brian. This first one shows you our new hires and separations. 16 new hires and 10 separations over the past month. We've had, next slide, please, we've had, as you can see, we are still issuing residential building permits as well as commercial permits. We have 31 residential and still some primary commercial and some alterations on commercial buildings. You see the, next slide, please, work orders. Thank you. Work orders for the county by district. And you'll see the Elmeg paving that we've done during the last month, primarily in Springs of Ellington and in the District 2 there. 2017 splopped, the resurfacing Gibson Way, and then paving Pitts Chapel. And you'll see the list of the other projects that we've also have continued to work on. We have our COVID snapshot. You can see the total number of cases for Newton County, number that's been reported in the last 14 days, hospitalizations, and the total deaths that we've had in Newton County since the, during this pandemic. Next slide, please. I wanna explain the two notes on the side. There were 487 cases of fully, of people who had been fully vaccinated with COVID. And however, unfortunately, the five of those cases died, and that accounts for 3.5% of the deaths. There were a total of 144 people who died in the county from the new COVID variant. And however, of the total of 144 that passed away, 90.3% of those people who passed away were people who had not been vaccinated. And of that number, there were 130. So the verbiage here is, there were not 9,000 people who died. There were actually 130 people who were not vaccinated who died. Total of 144 who died. But there were 130 people who were not vaccinated at all, six, nine people who were partially vaccinated, and five people who were fully vaccinated. So by far, the total number of deaths that are occurring from the new variant of COVID are from people who have not been vaccinated at all. So obviously, you know, we are still, the health, CDC and so forth, are still encouraging people to be vaccinated, to get fully vaccinated. So far in the county, there's 49,000 residents have at least one dose, and that accounts for 45% of the population roughly. And 44,000 residents, or 40% of the population, has been fully vaccinated, and that accounts for about 40% of the population. Next slide, please. I wanna bring to everybody's attention and remind everybody about the Parks Master Plan meetings that we're having. These are occurring in each district. However, anybody from any district is welcome to come. These are open house things where we ask you to come and then just kind of express your opinions. There's representatives from our Parks Department as well as the design team there that can answer questions for you. And we're looking for the public to give their preferences on what they would like to see in the Parks Department. So there's not, and this is kind of the type of open house that you see when you go for a G-dot present or open house. Not a formal presentation, but has, it's an opportunity to give your input and ask a lot of questions of the people who are there. So you'll see those dates. The next one coming up is October 21st, and that's for District 5 at Turner Lake Park. But again, there are several dates that are in here, and you're welcome, anybody from any district, to come to these plan meetings. We had our first one last night out in Mansfield, and just a couple of pictures from that meeting. And the way this is set up with several stations and your ability to provide feedback and input so that we make sure that we, that our consultants put together the best recommendation that they can and the best plan that they can. Next slide, please, is a picture of the presentation of our 200th anniversary flag to the City of Social Circle City Council there. We are doing this as part of our bicentennial celebration to all the cities, making sure that they all have a flag to hang out with their city flags as well. And another one of our bicentennial events is District 5 cleanup and some folks who participated in that. And this was done last weekend, I believe, is, is that's correct? And another bicentennial event is, this is our final movie, and this is Goosebumps. And this will be at Legion Field Goosebumps 2. As some of you, I think most all of you know, was actually filmed right here in Covington. The square became the center there for the town that was featured in Goosebumps 2. So it's free for everyone, and we'll provide popcorn and drinks and so forth. So it's a, our take on the drive-in movie. So we'd like to invite everybody to come, as many people as can. So it's a good, it's a fun evening, and so we hope that you'll, you know, come and bring your kids. One other thing, item with the bicentennial is our Legacy Brick Program. And we wanna encourage everyone who would like to commemorate a member of the family or your family or business to purchase a brick. They can purchase them for $75, and they're going to be going into the park that's located next to the administration building where the Rotary Club donated money to provide park benches and to provide the brick walkway and patio there and has got the Rotary symbol there. So this is an opportunity to provide a commemorative brick for, for many years to come to commemorate whatever person or event or business that you might like to commemorate. And that's all I have for this evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I was trying to ask a question during the presentation by the county manager. Question that I have, and going back to COVID, what are we doing, the county, Newton County, doing to try to encourage our citizens as far as taking the, being vaccinated before the COVID? Are we, do we get some kind of advertisement? Do we, do we have people knocking on doors? Are we trying to encourage them? Are we, are we showing that, that people in the community are dying? And that if we, if they were possibly, if someone was vaccinated, they could have possibly survived? And so what are, what are we doing? What are we doing?
Well-
The community trying to help people?
We make all of this information available to all of the public. The Health Department still has all of this available. The vaccines are free and available to the public through the County Health Department. We did have a mass vaccination center. However, once the numbers of people dwindled to less than three people a day, we found, we did have to wind up closing that center because we weren't getting any response. But we're still, we still have all of this information available to the public.
Okay, then we know the other counties, in some cases, I think, I was reminded that the county is giving out gift cards. Some of the other counties are having volunteers going to people, knocking on doors and telling the importance of getting vaccinated. We, they also, I think in Fulton County, if I'm not mistaken, they have a mobile unit that goes and makes sure that the seniors who may not be vaccinated, I'm praying that all of them are, at the very least, are vaccinated. And, you know, it's stuff like that I believe that we can do that may just save someone life. And, and I just wanna say that if we, the elected officials, just sit back and don't do anything, then, you know, who knows if we could save a life? And I'm just saying one thing, you lead by an example. I've been taking all of my, as many of my neighbors and friends who would let me take them to get vaccinated. And one of the things that my neighbor across the street, he called ambulance, they came over and they checked him out, and they was telling us he had COVID. And one of the things that he came back and said, if he would not have had his vaccination, he could have died. So, you know, I'm thankful. I believe in, you know, that I may have helped save a life. So that's what we need to do, is try to encourage our family and friends. Because I've had a couple of people in my family, first cousin, and then my sister who passed from COVID. And I don't, I don't wish that on anybody.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
It's gotta be quick, 'cause it's 7:30. Go ahead. Okay. I just wanted to clarify, it's not a quick question. The work projects, is that year-to-date or is that just for the month of October? When you list the different districts?
That was during the month of, actually, it's behind a month, so that would have been during the month of September.
September, okay. Thank you so much, guys. It is approximately 7:30. We've got, it's time for us to go on our public hearing tonight. Ms. Judy, would you please come on up, please?
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. You'll be happy to know tonight we only have one zoning item. And I would like to point out, before I get into this petition, there was someone who came up at the beginning of the meeting to speak about one of the zoning cases. That was tabled in October for 60 days, which would have made it come on the November 16th meeting. But since there's a consent agenda item to consider only having the single meeting in November, if that does pass, then that zoning item will come before you on December 7th. We will update the signs, but that zoning item would actually be a little better than 60 days and would not be heard until December the 7th. I mean, 7th is the first meeting, correct?
It did pass, so it'll be December the what now, 7th?
So, y'all have already done consent agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Well, have we?
Not yet. We, yeah, sorry, sorry. But, but yes, sir, it would be, so if there's people in the public with interest on that, that will be coming, and we will update signage so the public is aware, but that would be December 7th before that's heard. But the item before you this evening for consideration is an overlay tier change request. This is case number OTC, actually, OTC 21-000001. The property is located on North Crowell Road in Harold Dobbs. It has an existing overlay of the Almond Overlay Tier One and Tier Two, and they're requesting to change it to only Tier Two. The size of the parcel is 51.02 acres. It's located in District Three, and the petitioner is Mr. Denny Dobbs. And as you can see, this is a location of the property under request. It does run along the Yellow River. This map shows that it is in District Three. The next map shows the existing zoning for the property is R2, Single Family Residential. This shows that its future land use map shows it in a Parks Recreation Conservation because of the floodplain on the property. And then the developable area, which is about four acres, is a little pink round circle in the development node. This is a environmental map. This is going to show you that light green color there is your approximate 100-year flood zone. The blue is going to be your wetland area, and the pink areas are what is considered a 500-year flood zone. So the applicant's intent, the subject site is approximately 51.02 acres. It's located on the eastern intersection of Harold Dobbs Road and North Crowell Road, currently located with the Almond Overlay District in both Tier One and Tier Two. And the request is to bring the entire property into the Almond Overlay Tier Two to allow for a single civic use or a combination of civic and commercial. That was the applicant's request. This map here shows, if you'll look, the green area, the parcels highlighted in blue. The green area shows the current tier of two, and the yellow shows the portion of the property that's in Tier One. The petition's history, this petition was heard three times by your planning commission prior to it being able to come before the board this evening. So there were a lot of items that were worked out during the planning commission stage, but at the final hearing on September 28th, 2021, the planning commission voted to recommend approval of the petition with staff's conditions by a vote of 5-0. This here is the subject area, and this is actually divided up into two tracks, Track One and Track Two. The petition did have recommended conditions. This evening before you, there is going to be some highlighted area you're going to see in red. These are conditions. There was some concern brought to me by a commissioner with the Board of Commissioners Office, and they were concerned that if this was allowed to be commercial, what use would go there? There wasn't a site plan attached. So we worked with our legal department to condition this, that it would move forward as a civic use only. So this would not allow them to actually have a commercial component to the property. It would move forward as civic. This would be the recommended conditions, should this board approve it. So recommended conditions. Should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved Tier Two, Almond Overlay, conditional, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. A, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the property as follows. One, the portion of the property shown as Track Two on the site plan, survey dated 5/14/2021, by Patrick and Associates for Dobbs Property Partners LLC, shall only be used as a civic space and shall not be used for any other purpose. Site plan is attached and made a part of these conditions. B, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards for the civic space. One, paved entrance and driveway to the parking area to be approved by the Newton County Transportation Department. Two, hours open to the public shall be from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Three, developers shall install sidewalks along the road frontage of the property on Crowell Road. Any deviation from sidewalks along the entirety of the road frontage shall be at the discretion of the Newton County Transportation Department. Four, off-street paved parking areas shall include a minimum of 25 parking spaces, including two handicap spaces. Said parking areas shall be constructed at a minimum above the base flood elevation. Five, security lights shall be installed in the parking area. Six, driveway shall have a swinging metal gate installed across the drive so that the park can be locked at night. Seven, provide bicycle parking to accommodate a minimum of 10 bicycles. Eight, overnight camping is prohibited. Nine, no grills or fire pits allowed. Ten, install security cameras and equipment for monitoring of the site. Eleven, provide a concrete block or prefabbed unisex restroom with a small storage closet/room. Facility designed to be approved by the Newton County Recreation Department. Twelve, civic use of the property shall include, A, a walking trail, eight-foot hard-surface trail; B, a dog park with a six-foot-high black vinyl-coated fence with at least two leashing posts and a doggy bag station with a trash can. Fence shall be trenched in at least one foot in the ground. Dog park requirements to be approved by the Newton County Recreation Department. C, a totlot playground for ages three years to eight years old. D, enhanced passive recreational space with the following. One, six, heavy-duty power-coated frame, eight-foot benches. Two, six, 32-gallon trash cans with dome lids and liner. The cans shall consist of thermoplastic-coated, heavy-gauge, expanded metal. Three, picnic pavilions with tables. The tables shall be either, A, a 20-foot-by-40-foot pavilion wood frame with a concrete floor and a metal roof, or, B, two eight-foot tables with a small metal roof covering. If option B, one of the eight-foot tables shall be ADA compliant. Four, five eight-foot rectangular, heavy-duty, power-coated picnic tables. And five, one ADA picnic table. Thirteen, signage shall be installed for park rules and dog park rules to be approved by the Newton County Recreation Department. Fourteen, other than walking trails and location for a kayak launch, maintain the 150-foot riparian buffer along the Yellow River. Fifteen, if privately owned, a plan of action for perpetual maintenance, security, and lighting of the property to be approved by the Newton County Sheriff's Office, Development Services Department, and other applicable agencies. This is the site plan that is attached and made a part of the zoning conditions, so there's no confusion in the future as to what was restricted to civic use. And here are a few of the applicant's photos of the, some of the scenic area that is on the property. And I do believe your applicant is, the applicant is here this evening, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. We're going to go ahead and open it up for the public, for the public hearing and the applicant, and then we'll bring you back up. At this time, it is 7:41. We're going to open it up for our public comments, for the applicant and those that are in favor tonight. You have 10 minutes to speak tonight. If you would, please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Sure. Good evening. G. Harvey, 3840 Windermere Parkway, Suite 402, Coming, Georgia. Ms. Johnson did a good job summarizing it, so I'll try to be brief. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Dobbs. He owns the property. My partner and I are purchasing this property plus some of Mr. Dobbs' property across the street. The intent is to ultimately build a residential development. What we needed to do that was this property as part of our civic space. When we originally applied for a preliminary plat application or submitted that to the county, Ms. Dobbs pointed, or not Ms. Dobbs, Ms. Johnson pointed out that this property was in two tiers, Tier One and Tier Two, and that we couldn't proceed until we rectified that and had all of the property in a single tier, which led to submitting this application. Our intent has always been to develop this property as a civic space, as a park. We never intended to do anything else. We never intended to develop anything commercial there. I understand the concern. We have worked with your Parks and Rec Department to come up with these listed conditions, and our intent is, if this is approved, if the Board of Commissioners approves our tier change request, which I hope you'll do because it's consistent with your land use plan, as Ms. Johnson pointed out, that this property is actually set aside on your land use plan for a park. When we develop the subdivision, we would simultaneously develop this property pursuant to the conditions that have been laid out before you. The conditions are acceptable to us. I would like to make two comments on them, though, but those are acceptable. We worked with your Parks and Rec Department to come up with those list of conditions. Our plan would be to install all of this infrastructure, have Parks and Rec come out and inspect it, sign off on it, and at that point in time, we would actually deed this property over to the Parks and Rec Department so it would become a county park. But we will have been the ones who did the work that's outlined in these conditions that Ms. Johnson read to you. The two comments I have, and I just want to clarify this because what my experience has been is there can be confusion later, is condition three is acceptable to us. The only thing is there are some areas along Crowell Road where, when you get past the edge of the pavement, it drops off severely. I don't know that we can put sidewalks along the entire frontage. They tried to kind of work around that, but that was, that's one concern we have, you know, if it drops off 25 feet, we really can't put a sidewalk there. There's just no practical way to do that. And then the only other thing is, condition 14, there had been talk about a kayak launch. I don't know if that's necessary, but we don't really want to get into the riparian buffer at all along the Yellow River. We just prefer to stay out of that. One question that's come up and that I would address is, there's about five acres of that property that's out of the floodplain. That's where we would build the parking lot. That's where we'd build the pavilion, put the playground in. Then the trails would be throughout the rest of the property, and they could be down in the floodplain because it doesn't matter. At one point, this was actually farmland, and that's what it was used for. But we're fine with the conditions other than those two comments. That's our plan, is to develop all this simultaneously with the subdivision. The plan would be to come back, if we get this approved, go before your planning commission with a preliminary plat. Once this is approved, get them to approve that, and then proceed with, you know, submitting development plans to the county for review and approval. Our hope would be that we could have all this done in about two years. Unfortunately, it takes a while to go through the permitting process right now, and then also getting materials is extremely difficult. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have. The conditions are acceptable to us, with the exception of those two notes I made. I just would point that out.
Thank you, sir. Someone may have, they may have a question for you shortly here. Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. Thank you, sir. We also allow 10 minutes for those that want to speak opposing tonight. If you want to oppose tonight, you may come at this time. You have 10 minutes as well. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone want to oppose tonight? Anyone want to oppose tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. Mr. Judy, if you would, please come on back up. Thank you so much. I know Commissioner Henderson had his hand up first.
Thank you. I guess the question for me with it, a particular piece of property, because I stayed over there with my aunt for several years. I know every time it comes with big rain, especially, I think, the trailer park is District Four, we have to go over the county and rescue people because the water has almost came up to their doors and they feel a little threatened on the other side of the Yellow River. So I guess the question that I'm asking, what's going to make it different on that side? Because I have seen where they have had to close the road, and the water be up so high, I think you probably could fish in there for a few days. And so, I mean, how are we going to, I mean, maintain and keep a park when it doesn't wait till every 100 years flood, flood by every five or six years?
Yes, sir, and I understand what you are saying. If you'll look at this map here, this map here, the area that is in blue is pretty much the Yellow River itself and wetlands, and you're definitely in the floodplain. The Riverside Mobile Home Park, which is one of the properties that we have had to send our life safety people out to rescue people that were in the lower areas in their RVs or so forth. Now, what we're, what the proposal would be to do, not we, but their proposal, that little area that you see that looks brown, that is, that is outside of any of the floodplain. And while that looks like a very small blip, that's actually a little better than four acres. So where we would be asking for the park to be placed, the totlot, the parking lot, the bathroom, that area would be in this area that is completely outside of the floodplain. Then the area that gets into the green, which is in the floodplain, that goes down near the Yellow River, that would be where trails would be installed and potentially in the future, or if this board would like to include that in that condition. I know that the applicant was asking for some consideration. That would be, if there was flooding coming, we would, that park, part of the park would not be able to be accessed. And with the gate, we would also be able to close the park should there be concerns. But the actual buildings and anything that where people would be recreating at is going to be on these four acres that is outside of that floodplain area. And I will say that the topo on this side of the property is much different than the Riverside Mobile Home Park. A Riverside Mobile Home Park, literally, the Yellow River runs right beside it. And when it floods, it comes up and over the little embankment there. You've got quite a distance, well over 150 feet, possibly even 300 feet, away from the river at the location we would be putting the park in.
Commissioner Sanders?
Judy, I did receive a lot of calls about this property, not only just for my district, but those who just traveled Crowell Road. How many residential homes are going to be built on the property, on the adjacent property?
On the preliminary plat, how many? Shayna, does my preliminary plat, Shayna, would you come up, please?
I think the gentleman behind you.
The applicant, okay. Was it three?
Yes, ma'am. Good question. And also, let me, if I can, real quick, just Mr. Henderson, address your comment. That's a valid concern, but if you look at trails in a lot of communities around Atlanta, like the Swanee Greenway, even portions of the Silver Comet Trail, they're in floodplain, and they do flood when you have a lot of rain. That's not abnormal for a lot of these trail systems because that's where you can end up locating the lands viable and you can connect everything together. But that does happen, but that's common throughout metro Atlanta. To your question, we've got, it's roughly 300 total units there, but we have met with your Department of Transportation. There are road improvements- There are road improvements presently proposed, and I think in, in process of being done at some point, for Crowell Road and, I think, for Harold Dobbs. Our timing, if everything goes well, which I know that doesn't happen in development, but if it goes well, the improvements to Crowell Road and Harold Dobbs, they would complete right now per the schedule we are given by your Department of Transportation before anybody moves into any of these houses. So I understand there's road improvements that need to be done, but there are improvements proposed to both of those roads, and then we would also have to make some improvements. Generally, what happens when we do our plans, we've got to put in Acel lanes, Decel lanes, turning lanes, et cetera. We would do that before anybody moves in, and then hopefully all these other improvements would be finished, because it would take us about a year to develop the property after getting a permit. So, you know, let's call it six, seven, eight months to get a permit, a year to develop it, and you gotta get building permits and build a house. You're two to two and a half years away before you had any homeowners living there. That timeframe matches up with the road improvements that are currently scheduled to be done out there. So all that should be addressed before anybody lives in this new development. Timing may not work out just right, but all that should go, i- if everything kind of goes somewhat as planned.
Have you done a traffic study to see what the traffic would look like once this is built? And how would it actually affect those who are already, because Crowell Road is backed up right now.
Sure.
It's horrible, even Harold Dobbs.
Correct. And so we did, we've done a traffic study, and we can update it, but it, it did not propose anything in addition to the improvements that are already proposed and scheduled with your Department of Transportation, other than whatever the Acel, Decel lanes in that we normally have to put in.
Have you seen this traffic study, Judy?
They did submit a traffic analysis for the preliminary plat. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They have, and one of the, the biggest concerns with the way Harold Dobbs Road's cur- currently comes out, if you'll look, it is, it, it does a, a pitch north. That road would come where that little pink area is across from where the park would be. That road will be straightened out, so you're not gonna have people trying to come out at a elbow turn. You're gonna have people coming straight out when the road improvements from transportation is done. Their preliminary plat shows that there will be two curb cuts off of Harold Dobbs and one off of Crowell, and, and there will also be an access further south on Crowell Road where people in that subdivision would be able to also come out further down on Crowell Road and not have to go back out on Harold Dobbs.
And so how would it affect the citizens that live in Silver Ridge, that's across from that property? Is it going to be, because, you know, there's a lot of homes in that area as well?
Right. Well, the road improvements that the Transportation Department is doing to realign Harold Dobbs Road should also be able to greatly improve the existing Silver Ridge or any of our subdivisions that come out on Harold, or, or use Harold Dobbs Road to go over to the interstate or to Crowell Road there.
Okay. That's all the questions I have right now. Anybody else have any?
Anyone else? Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Couple of quick questions. Will this affect any of the density that's already allowed on the other side of Crowell Road? I mean, they've, they've got, what, 300 homes?
They have 300. This, their petition is the very last petition that has been in the pipeline since before the moratorium. So this is the very last petition that would, if, if the overlay tier change is allowed, then it would allow the project that they had as a preliminary plat to move forward to the planning commission, which would allow the, there would be a mixture of 120 town homes, and then the remaining 300 would all be single family.
Well, I know this county's been, and it's not since the last group of people came on here, but this county's been notorious for swapping property to get higher density. Is that anything like this?
Well, this, this would be a mixed use. So under our mixed use in the Almond Overlay, you have to be in a certain tier, which the property on the other side of the road is in the correct tier, but they cannot use this property for mixed use unless it is completely in Tier Two. Tier One doesn't allow a mixed use product. So mixed use would be, at this point, they want 70% residential, and the, they're giving 30% of the property for a civic use.
Okay, and we, and by civic use, we mean a park?
Yeah, correct. Yes, sir.
And obviously, he's from Cumming. He's never seen it when it rains. Good luck with that. I'll tell you that. By the way, I don't know how the county, other people feel, but I just assume y'all keep it, don't deed it to the county, because we don't want it. I wouldn't want it. But I want to make sure that, that, one, I guess, you're gonna, your company's gonna continue with it, and you're gonna build it out, like you said, you're gonna build it out, and then you hope to deed it to the county.
Well, so.
I could just say right now, if I'm on the board, I don't want it.
Okay. Well, that was, that was a discussion topic, and so we approached the County Parks and Rec Department, asked if they would want it, and they said, if you did all of this, we would want it. If that's not the case, we're okay either way.
Well, I'm just afraid of the maintenance costs, because it floods about every five years.
Sure, and I have actually been out there after it rains. We, we actually been working on this for a year, but the property where the building would be built, the parking lot, the plant, that does not flood.
Right.
Okay? So I understand your concern. The only thing that should ever flood would be portions of the trails. The actual building, parking lot, pavilion, that should never flood. That hasn't.
I understand. I mean, I, I hope it doesn't.
Sure.
But if it does, I'd rather you pay for it than us pay for it.
Sure.
Let me get back to this other question here. You said it's gonna allow some more mixed use development in there. I guess that's, that's already allowed in the Tier Two?
Yes, by ordinance, it is allowed. Again, there is.
And that would be on the property across the road?
Correct. And I don't know if one of the maps we have here clearly shows that other.
And I want to make sure I understand that the, making this Tier Two just brings it all in compliance, and then you can do whatever you want to do on the other side of the road.
And, yes, sir. That would be, the intent of the application is to bring in the preliminary plat for mixed use should this be approved.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, sir. The property, we thought all the property was already Tier Two. How a portion of Mr. Dobbs' property across the street ended up Tier One, Tier Two, nobody knows. I think it was just a line drawn on a GIS map when all that was done.
Probably.
We were trying to proceed underneath the current zoning, and Ms. Johnson pointed out when we submitted the application that, hey, you can't, because a portion of what you submitted, the lion's share of it, what you're doing is Tier Two, but this portion of it's Tier One, it's all gotta be the same tier. So that's why we're here this evening. We're trying to proceed as it's, as, we're not doing any land swap. We do development in four states. We will buy the property, develop the property, and be involved to the very end. We'll be the ones posting the bonds. We'll be the ones addressing comments. We do this all over Metro Atlanta. I'm in Charlotte, Nashville, Greenville. We're committed. We're not going anywhere. Yes, I don't live in Covington. We have a very good track record. I can, I can give you names if you want them after the fact. We're very good about responding. I mean, if, if a city calls you, I can give you a list of five or six you can call. If they've ever called and asked us, we've done exactly what they've asked us to do 100% of the time, no questions asked. Just, I, I know that doesn't mean a lot, but we do what we say we're gonna do.
But you're gonna come back at some point with a preliminary plat for multi-use, for multifamily?
No, sir.
Multi-use?
It's gonna be single-family, single-family residential subdivision, just gonna have a townhouse component, detached lots, and then we would build a park. That's it.
And we're not increasing the density by creating this, making this Tier Two?
No, there's no.
The density's already there.
The density would be there, yes.
Already?
Yes, sir. The density would be there, but it could not go as a mixed use such as the townhomes. They would be restricted to single-family only. If, if they, if, if it went straightforward as just a plat without this mixed use with civic, then they could only do individual detached homes. With a mixed use, they could have a townhome component, single-family component, and a non-residential, which they have chosen as civic.
They could also have some commercial on that side, couldn't they?
Well, and, and that was the concern that was raised, was because there was no plan of action for a commercial component here, and the fact that there's only four acres that is outside of the floodplain.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about the property across the road.
Um, no, sir. Well, theoretically, it could be commercial now, because it's in Tier Two.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
But this property, you've got four acres that's usable land. You want to build a park on it, and then eventually give it to the county recreation, if, if they accept it. And that's up to y'all.
Commissioner Sanders.
Okay, thank you.
So if it's in Tier One, how many homes can currently, you said, single-family homes? How many homes can be built if it's in Tier One currently?
Right now, being not under the moratorium, it would be three houses per acre.
Okay.
It's virtually, it would, it would be a de minimis difference in the, in the yield, because the property across the street where we're building national subdivisions is already in Tier Two. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Well, the reason why I'm asking, because you have the, the residence, the subdivisions in that area are not townhomes. They're all single-family homes. And just to keep the, the match of the area and some of the feedback I've gotten from the citizens, they are stating, I don't want a townhome next to my half a million dollar home, because Silver Ridge is like three, $400, $1,000 homes. So that's why I was asking how many homes are actually, can be built in Tier One already, because I know that's already approved. How many homes can be currently built staying in Tier One?
Well, the property across the street's already in Tier Two. We're only talking about a portion of the property across the street where the park would go. The property across the street's not in Tier One. It's already in Tier Two. It's, it's kind of a weird situation. I don't know if that was clear. The, the piece where the subdivision will go is already in Tier Two. We're not actually changing where that would be. It was just this small par, portion of land across the street that's, half of it's in Tier Two, half of it's in Tier One.
But to, but to build the additional townhomes, it needs to be in Tier Two, am I correct?
Correct.
So that's the question I'm asking. If it's not in Tier Two and it's in Tier One, how many homes currently, right now, can be built?
Okay, let me see if I can. I think, I, I know what you're asking, and I think I may have a way to explain it. The 100 plus minus acres, I think it's 108 acres, that is on the west side of Crowell Road, is currently in Tier Two, but right now, their project shows all of this being residential. They did not have, they did not allocate out of the 108 acres on the west side a 30% to dedicate to a different use. So because they had land, Mr. Dobbs had land across the road, they wanted to bring that in as their non-residential component and put all of the residential on the west side. But if they had just come in with the west side and had it in the ratios of 70% residential, which is single-family, multifamily, townhomes, and 30% non-residential, we would not even be doing the overlay tier change. It would have just moved forward. But they had designed their west side to have only residential, and they, and when they brought this in, this didn't match the tiers, so that's why they're asking for. So right now, the west side could have had all of these components. He wouldn't get the yield, because he would only be working with the 100 plus minus acres on the west side. Does that kind of, so he is positioned on the west side correctly. He's not positioned on the east side correctly.
I would like to make a motion, and the only reason why I'm making this motion is I want to seek additional information.
Okay.
It's not declining or approving at this particular moment. I would like to table this for 30 days to seek additional, well, I guess it would be 30 days.
To December 7th.
There we go. December 7th. So that we can, I can also, I want to talk to the residents in Silver Ridge, because they had concerns, which is probably something you all want to do as well, because they need to hear from you and what you're trying to do, because these individuals have been in their homes for about three or four years, and we're inconveniencing them. So I want to make sure that I'm making the right decision for those in District Three. So I, I would like to table this for the December 7th date, just to seek more information, additional information from the constituents in the area, and as well as the floodplains, as my colleagues also stated as well. I wanted to look in that a little bit more deeper, so the county is protected.
It's been motion by Commissioner Sanders and second by Commissioner Henderson that we table this until December the 7th. Give one second, you can. Give me one second. Any discussion?
Mr. Cowan.
Thank you. This sounds a lot like what we approved at Georgia 11 near the college. Townhome mix and residential mix. So we already got a pattern in place for this. I think it was Rob and, Rob Fowler and Charlie Toller.
Mount Pleasant, yes, sir.
At that Mount Pleasant, and so we already got a model kind of in place for this. I just want to make that comment. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
All in favor? It's stand table to December the 7th. Thank you, sir.
The chairman.
I'm sorry.
We do have the preliminary plat available if people would like to see that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. It's stand table to December the 7th. Next on the agenda, we're going back to item number eight, approval of amendments. I seek a motion, please. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes 5, 5-0. Next is unfinished business. Newton County Water and Sewer Authority, City of Covington Service Delivery Strategy. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I don't see anybody here from either City of Covington or the Water and Sewer Authority, so I will attempt to explain this. The Water and Sewer Authority and the City of Covington both have service delivery areas that are outside of the city limits of Covington East on Highway 278. And there is a, an area that they have identified as a deering, or deer field area that is served currently, or I'm sorry, is between the City of Covington Sewer Service Area and the Water and Sewer Authority's Eastern Service Area, and this area is not currently designated for either service, sewer service by any provider. Also, it appears that there is a, that the Water and Sewer Authority are the water providers for Beacon Hill subdivision, and that their, City of Covington, but this subdivision's within Covington Service Area, and that there is a connect, an interconnecting meter that goes to Melody Farms. And so the, there's, it's recommended that the Covington should provide the sewer service to the deer field area so that they can, that Covington can provide the water and the sewer service there, and that the Water and Sewer Authority provide the water service and the sewer service to the Beacon Hill subdivision and then, and Melody Farm subdivision. And there's also property to the south and to the east of the new high school. And this would allow the Water and Sewer Authority to provide a water loop through the Newton Ridge subdivision, and would also transfer the ownership of the Melody Farms storage tank that's located in Melody Farms that belongs to the City of Covington. Doing these things according to the Water and Sewer Authority and the City of Covington would provide a long-term solution for sewer availability in the area, ensure that su- future developments will be provided water and sewer by the same entity, remove the orphaned water service area in Beacon Hill, provide a looped water for quality and hydraulic improvements for Newton County Water and Sewer Authority, and eliminate two interconnect medi, meters. This request had been tabled, I think, twice by the board. Um, this request had been tabled, um, uh, I think twice by the board. Um, originally, it was to be considered in May, or first of June, rather, I believe. Um, and it had been, uh, tabled twice. So it's now, uh, back before you for further consideration.
And, and, um, Mr. Kerr, they, they are wanting the board to give them, um...
The board has to approve the change in the service areas because currently, um, i- it's essentially a service area swap. And what we would have to do then would be to, we would have to approve it at this level and the service deliver, and record the changes in the service delivery strategy. And then make those changes, uh, and send those to the, um, DCA for inclusion in our service delivery strategy.
Thank you, sir. Um, I think this in, is that District One? Um, Commissioner Edwards?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chairman. This time, I'd like to motion, make a motion that we deny the Newton County Water and Sewer Authority Service Delivery Strategy and Plan Agreement. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
What's your thoughts on it?
Well, yeah, that's what I'm going to ask.
Hold on, hold on, guys. Hold, hold on, guys. Hold, hold on, guys. You're making a motion that we deny. Okay. Can I get a second?
Someone could make a second and then you could enter in discussion.
Yeah.
Making a second doesn't require you to vote in favor of the motion.
Okay, I'll make a second for discussion.
There's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner, uh, Cowan. Now, any discussion? Any, anybody?
Go ahead, Stan. I'm, I'm interested in hearing where you're, where you're coming from on this.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. But yes, I, there's no, there's no practical reason for actually doing this. Uh, the, I've met with bo, both City Covington and the Newton County Water and Sewer Authority. And there, there's going to be no, there are no plans to expand the, the, the sewerage. There's only a small portion of land, uh, near the river that's, that's in question. And, uh, on top of that, uh, if, if, if sewer were to be approved in some of these areas, then, then it's gonna, it will infringe on your ability to, um, in cer, certain zoning areas, cer, certain zoning, zoning instances, instances. So we have, um, right now, we have, everybody that's being served out there right now with water and sewer are just fine. There's, there's no real reason to do this other than to, um, take sewer into places that we don't, that, that, that don't intend to go for right now.
Uh, Commissioner Sanders?
So basically, this is to help expand the building in the county, correct? Because if, that's what I'm hearing.
Well, what, what, what it will do, will it enable density?
Well, yeah, well, we kind of get, need to get it out of District Three, I'm going to be honest with you. But, um, so it's, it's, I'm, I'm trying to understand why would we deny the expansion to go to other districts? Maybe somebody else has some more insight than I, I would. Uh, Commissioner, you done? You done? Commissioner Cowan went to next.
Thank you. Um, I guess I worked at the City of Covington long enough to know how the operations work. But your water, your sewer rates are based on your water usage. So if you don't have water, it's hard to charge sewer for areas that you don't have a water usage. I think it's a fifty percent. Isn't that right, Jason? You used to read the meters.
But it's like, uh, it's fifty percent of whatever your water usage is, that's how your sewer bill is. So my, my frame of reference is, is that your, wherever your water lines go, your sewer lines ought to follow. That ought to be the service delivery area. I do understand where Stan's coming from. If you do open up sewer in areas, everybody that has a piece of land that wants to sell it is going to ask for higher density in those areas. But one thing you've got out there, you've got the school out there. I mean, how are they gonna, who's going to service that? How's that working out?
Um, hold on, let me, you going to answer, Lord?
Right. Well, this letter does indicate that the city is building another pump station there and that there is the possibility for the land east and south of the, of the, um, of the school could gravity feed into that pump station. There's limited availability now, but it, that could, that station could be upgraded. So, um, it, it could open up signa, you know, significantly.
So, so I think, who, who's actually servicing the school?
City of Covington.
Okay, and that's for, that's, um...
That's for water and sewer.
That's for both. Okay.
And it, we do have, the City of Covington has a forced main sewer from Takeda all the way back to the Yellow River Plant.
They do, but they've also built the, uh, there also will be a gravity feed.
Well, if they put gravity flow in there, you know, that's going to open up the whole area for development anyway. So, I mean, forced main, you know, they can't, it's, it's harder to tie into a forced main, although you can, but, um,
It's expensive.
It's harder to do. But gravity flow would definitely open up that whole eastern side of the county to higher density and development. Where does this, where does the service delivery area stop at now? Does it stop at the Alcoa River?
It says here, let's see, um, the new high school is constructing a gravity sewer main that'll extend parallel to two seventy-eight west from one forty-two before discharging into the water, uh, water authorities, sewer authorities, Alcoa River Lift Station. It's finite capacity available in, in that lift station, but they've committed that capacity to serve contracted customers in Stanton Springs. So that's the forced main you're talking about. Additionally, growth is expected. Uh, following review of the gravity sewer main to serve the high school, the city, um, extend the gravity proposed main from the school. Install a lift station adjacent to NCWSA's lift station and a forced main to discharge to the east side trunk line. There's, let me see where I saw. I'm trying to find where I saw the language that said it could serve property to the east and the south. The, they, and, and I'm sorry, I'm not terribly familiar with the map. That's why...
Let me just ask this question, Ms. Chairman. Would you allow Stan and I to talk with, I guess we need to talk to the city and talk to the Water and Sewer Authority to see what the impacts might be out there, um, and how far are they going to go? I, I don't know. I don't know. I do know that they've got to the school, uh, and they've got actually water lines beyond that. Of course, everybody beyond that would be on se, uh, septic tank.
Right.
But if you're going to have, if, if there's going to be any, and development's going to come, as, as hard as what we, you say, you want to fight it, it's, it's coming. You, you've got a lot of potential areas out there that, uh, you might want to consider. But this is an opportunity for Stan and I to maybe talk about. We may disagree here, but you know, we may, uh, like a good Republican, right?
Well, guys.
But anyway, does that be okay?
Well, guys, listen, we, we've tabled this several times, um...
Oh, we have?
Yep, um...
Ms. Chairman?
Hold on, hold on, one second, Commissioner. Uh, we said, we've, we've tabled this several times. We, we're going to have to make a decision one way or the other. I think we talked about one time, um, annexation and de-annexation. So, you know, we're going, you, you had to make a decision because sooner or later, if you deny, if you deny, um, Newton County Water and Sewer Authority, City of Covington, all they're going to do is annex and it's going, it's going to be the same, it's going to be the same thing. Uh, the city limits is going to go a, a lot farther out. But I'm, I mean, you can make a motion, but I recommend this, this board that we, um, make a decision sooner or later. Uh, Commissioner?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Wait, 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 let me, let me back up because somebody was in front of you. Commissioner Edwards, I'm sorry.
I had, to answer your question, Commissioner Cowan, I had met, I've met with the City of Covington. They're fine with this, with this denial. City of Covington and, and Newton County Water and Sewer Authority. I met with them right down here and they both told me they're fine. I told them I was going to fight and they said this, uh, we, you know, basically they were indifferent, be, to be honest with you. That's, I hate to paraphrase for them, but that's, that's basically what I walked away from that with, so. Uh, the, the, we, we, Beacon Hill, Deer Field, they're, they're not going to jump on sewer anyway. Those are, those are established subdivisions. And the City of Covington, if they get that service delivery area, is not going to run sewer into those subdivisions anyway. So, um, but there are, there is development property on down one forty-two and two seventy-eight that's, um, you know, that, that would, the, the forced main is dedicated to, uh, um, to the, the Stanton Springs anyway. That capacity is dedicated to Stanton Springs. The forced main running from the new high school is a gravity feed down to, back toward the river. Yes. The City of Covington does, yes, without the service delivery area. So, you know, so, uh... Say that again? That was, that was, that was negotiations between Newton County Water and Sewer Authority and City Covington.
So, Mr. Kerr, then Commissioner Henderson?
Well, I, I just wanted to, I just wanted to add that, that I, I did find where it says. Also, it appears that the undeveloped property to the south and east of the high school can be served by gravity sewer that would discharge into the east side lift station. Covington is currently, while they may not be talking about extension, it does say that Covington is currently in the design phase of increasing the capacity of both the east side trunk line and the lift station and is expecting to have capacity available to serve this area. So while they may not be interested right now in, in expanding the lines, it does appear that they are preparing for that scenario at some point, so.
They are. Uh, Commissioner Henderson?
Ms. Chairman, after this discussion, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to vote.
Uh, there's been motion that we, um, denied. So if there's no more, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner, you good? You sure? You sure? We got time? Okay. Um, there's been motion that we denied. It was motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Um, all in favor? All opposed? It passes three, two.
You'll need a, you'll need a motion to approve.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Moving on, if I don't hear a motion, guys. I hear a motion?
Ms. Chairman, after this discussion, I'm, I will make a motion to approve.
Can I get a second, please? Is there a second? He made a motion to approve and I need, it, there's a motion on the floor to approve and there need to be a second. There's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It passed three, two. Uh, next on the agenda is, um, well, I lost my spot. Uh, the Splosh Committee. Mr. Kerr?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, the, the board had asked that we table the Splosh Committee appointments, the last meeting, which, which we did. And this is a list of the appointments. Um, I've not received anything from, um, uh, I, I have received information from the chairman and from Commissioners, um, uh, Edwards and from Commissioner Sanders, um, and from Commissioner Cowan. Um, but, um, if the other Commissioners are satisfied with their current appointments or if there are other appointments, um, we'd like to go ahead and appoint these, uh, people tonight or if we do need to delay it again, certainly we can do that.
Uh, guys, I, I seek a motion, please?
Ms. Chairman, I think, I think we tabled, if, if I might, if I might say, we think we tabled because I listed for it to be tabled so that I could, um, find me an apartment for District Four. Because, um, I want to, I want to, um, have a, uh, uh, young lady to represent District Four on the Splosh Committee. And I would like to make my representative, Ms. Bobby Shepherd.
Only, um, no, no, yeah, yeah. You want, that's who you want? Can you put that, can you put that in the minutes? If you want to make, um...
I want to change, uh, from my good friend, Mr. Banks, to Ms. Bobby Shepherd.
Districts Four, Splosh Committee. Thank you. Yep. I seek a motion, please?
Don't move.
Don't move. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. It passed, it passed five oh. Again, we always announce, um, when someone is being added to the team. So, uh, I think Ms., is, is that's her name? Um, also, Ms. Dana Herring, thank you for, Herring, for, thank you for your willingness to serve as well. She'll be serving on the Splosh Committee as well. So thank you so much. Next is Casino agenda. I seek a motion that we approve, please?
Don't move.
Can I get a second? There's been motion, uh, by Commissioner Edwards, second, uh, by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh.
Thank you.
Next is, uh, Finance. Ms. Brittany.
Good evening. Tonight, I will be presenting the September twenty twenty-one financial statements. September is the third month of our fiscal year, so that puts us right around twenty-five percent, um, of the way through our fiscal year. I will start with the general fund revenues. Year-to-date, our revenues have been six point five million, which puts, puts us at eight point four five of our actual to budget. And these two graphs just show the revenues per month and the revenues where we are versus our budget. Our general fund expenditures for the year, to date, our expenditures are fifteen point eight million, which puts us at twenty point three percent of our actual to budget. And the graph shows per month of our expenditures and then our expenditures to our budget. And currently, for our general fund revenues for the year, our revenues are under nine point two of our expenditures, which is trending normal for the year because tax collections have not started coming in yet. Our enterprise funds for our water fund, the revenue actual to date is two point six. The expenses to date are one point four. Solid waste, the revenues are two point three for the year and the expenses are nine hundred and seventy-two thousand. And for gaithers, the revenue is sixty-three thousand for the year and the expenses are forty-five thousand for the year. And below are just the graphs per fund. We currently have two active splost. One is the two thousand eleven splost and we have one point one million remaining there with finishing up the Fire Station Eight project and the historic jail projects. The two thousand seventeen splost, there's currently ten point six million available to spend in that fund. This shows the collections. We are trending high, higher than the budgeted for the collections. We're currently fifteen point seven over, um, the... We're currently fifteen point seven over, um, the projected collections for the Splosh. And the Impact Fee Fund, the current balance there is four million. Are there any questions?
No question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Brittany. Uh, next is item number twelve. Um, IT purchasing, a request approval of task order C-ten for extension program management, LLC, for IT department to help the administrating building emergency power system project, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is a task order for, um, engaging Ascension, uh, project management to manage the installation of a, um, uh, generator. Um, I believe it's a seven hundred KW generator to be installed in the, uh, administration building, um, to provide emergency power, uh, for that building. Primarily, this is being done, uh, as an IT project, um, because we do not have anything to back up the servers. And that building houses all of the servers that are the backbone of all of our, um, uh, communications and all of our record keeping for the county. Um, this, uh, uh, generator will provide enough, uh, power and will run on, um, diesel fuel, and I believe that it will provide us backup power for a period of, uh, either three or four days. So, we would have power, emergency power for a period long enough, uh, if we ever had a catastrophic power failure due to storm or some other thing that would happen, so. It's a major project. So, his fees, the fees for that are thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please.
Don't move, this is slated by County Manager.
Thank you, sir. Who's second? Who, Cowan? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan, any discussion? All in favor? It passes five, oh. Um, item thirteen, um, depart, uh, Development Service requesting approval of resolution R zero, I'm sorry, one, zero, one, nine, two, zero, two, one. A resolution provided for the installation of streetlights and assessment of the annual costs of maintaining and operating said lights against property served by those light for Brittany Trace subdivision, Mr. Kerr.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is a streetlight, simply a streetlight petition to provide streetlights for the Brittany Trace subdivision. Um, this, uh, subdivision's follow-up with, followed all of the protocol and necessary in order to, uh, put this in place. The, uh, charge for the lights, uh, is a total of, uh, monthly cost will be a hundred and six dollars and forty cents. And that will be distributed among the property owners, uh, who will be receiving the benefit, uh, for those lights.
Thank you, sir. I think this is in District One.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Motion to approve resolution one, zero, one, nine, two, zero, two, one. This is slated by County Manager.
Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Ki- Henderson. Um, any discussion? All in favor? It passes five, oh. Thank you. Uh, next is thirteen A, uh, Cornish Creek. Um, to submit application for Economic Development Agency grant. Proceeds to collaborate with municipalities and authorities of Covington for water improvement and waste and water infrastructure. James Brown, come on down.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The question was about the matching. Well, currently, uh, as the, the grant states, is that we can use current grant, uh, G, G-for loans. And currently, we have thirty-seven million dollars in G-for loans. Thirty-seven million dollars in G-for loans. That could be utilized as matching funds for the overall grant. From water sales. Yes.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please.
Don't move.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second? It's been motion, uh, by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason, any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five, oh. Thank you so much. Item number fourteen, uh, resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners to grant per, uh, a permanent utility easement, uh, for Neely Farms Family Limited Partnership, L-L-L-P. Mr. Kerr? I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Jockster.
I'll be taking care of that, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, in two thousand and one, the county entered into a, a transaction with Neely Farms Family Limited Partnership to reroute the east side trail, and there was a little conveyance, it was minimal conveyance. Part of that deal called for Neely Family Farms to install a sewer line that terminated on Westwood Drive in an existing manhole. They did, in fact, install that sewer line. The county then built the trails. The problem was, the easement for the sewer line was never properly executed and recorded. And what we're asking this board to do is approve that easement, so there will be an easement, granting the right to keep and maintain the sewer line where it exists. There's really no change on the ground, we're just making sure that paperwork matches the reality on the ground. Or, in this case, in the ground. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
I seek a motion, please. Commissioner Cowan?
Uh, I make a motion to approve resolution one, zero, one, nine, two, oh, two, one, A. Uh, resolution of Board of Commissioners to grant permanent utility easement to Neely Farms Family Limited Partnership.
Can I get a second? Thank you, sir. It's been motion by Commissioner, um, Cowan and second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, it passes five, oh. Next is approval letter to support A, AT&T and Newton County, uh, broadband grant application. Mr. Kerr?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, one of the, um, buckets of money that is part of the American Recovery, um, Act, is a, is money that has been given to, directly to the state of Georgia, um, and under the, uh, Georgia State Fiscal Recovery Fund Program. Um, a portion of that money has been set aside, uh, for broadband, and that is for, uh, specifically for wired, uh, broadband. And the state is offering the money up to counties and cities, uh, in the form of a grant. The grant application is due, uh, by the end of this month. Uh, AT&T, um, has offered to apply for that grant for us in a, in a partnership. They are going to, um, put up, um, three and a half million dollars towards the, uh, this is an eleven million dollar, uh, project. And we are going to, are part of it, in partnership with them, we're gonna request eight million dollars from the, uh, state, uh, from the State Fiscal Recovery Fund. And this letter is, uh, a letter to, um, the, to AT&T, uh, actually supporting their application on our behalf and supporting the partnership that we're having, that we are entering into, uh, with them to, uh, get this grant fund, to apply for this grant funding, uh, from the state. Um, we don't know, there's no guarantee that we'll get it, we, no guarantee we'll get the eight million dollars that it would take to provide the, um, uh, broadband service, that's what it would take, I believe, to provide, uh, ninety, I believe it was ninety-seven percent coverage. Uh, some counties are putting up money, um, towards it, but, um, in any event, we're, uh, we are not going to put up any match, and we're gonna see where this goes, so. But, um, this was a particular pot of money that the state, uh, was given directly, so. And so this, you can see, you, I believe all of you have a copy of this letter, and you can read, uh, for yourselves, what the, unless it's you'd like for me to read it, Mr. Chairman?
I think everybody has it.
Okay, you want me to read?
Everybody has it.
Okay.
Guys, I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a letter of support of AT&T and Newton County Broad, Broadband Grant Application. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner, uh, Sanders, any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I just wanna make sure of one thing.
Sure.
If the, if we, if they're unsuccessful in securing money from the state, uh, th- this grant money, we are not obligated past that point with AT&T, correct?
No, sir, we're not obligated.
Okay, and this is for, this is for fixed wire, wireline services only?
That is for wireline services, yes, sir, that's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five, zero, thank you. Next on agenda is, um, fifteen A, a discussion of opera funds, uh, Mr. Kerr?
I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Um, any Commissioners? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought I heard something different, but, uh, this is about the, uh, American Rescue Funds and, uh, this discussion that we're having. Monday, Monday at six thirty, uh, yesterday evening, um, I had a town hall meeting, and I was invited to, I'm at a town hall meeting at one of the local churches here in, in Covington, here in town. Um, to my surprise, but it wasn't really a surprise, there was, sure was all my fool, we made it be as safe as possible. And so everyone wore masks. And it was just something that you, bam, on the, on the, um, Facebook page, and people looked at. And they came in because there were so many people who were out in the community that was, were hurting. And it's one lady, I think, um, sister-in-law that came up, and she was talking about her kids. Well, there was a, a lot of sisters-in-laws at that particular meeting. In fact, if you wanna, uh, just kinda view what, what all, uh, I kinda put on my, um, Facebook page so that if anyone who was, um, interested could see for themselves, rather than take my word. There were people talking about, uh, their rent was behind, and they wanted, they wanted to ask myself the question. And fortunately for me and Commissioner Sanders, she was there too as well. What are y'all doing with the ten million? Why aren't y'all helping us? And that's what they felt like, uh, they were deserving to have us help them with their bills. Because they understood that the cap county helped their residents. City Cov, I mean, City Corrigan's helped their residents, Fulton County helped their residents, so why are we taking so long to help people who need it? Well, they sound like those. And so, I, the question is, why aren't we trying to move this faster? I mean, uh, I, I don't understand even that about the consultant. Why do we need a consultant to give, let's use a united way. Uh, let's use, uh, uh, you know, other organizations, nonprofit organizations, uh, to kinda distribute this money. So, why are we holding on it? So, they gave some, some reason, people met me outside and talked to me. So, you know, maybe they're trying to pay down the debt. So, take the million dollars, pay down county debt. I said, well, I, I don't think so, I said, but I don't know. Yeah, and they said, well, they're trying to be a role. I said, well, I don't think so, but I don't know. Well, they said, why won't they get, deliver this help to us, the citizens? And there was, uh, I think about five preachers there. Not with a congregation, thankfully. But there were five preachers there, said that they were, was gonna run a campaign as why are we always the last to help our people, especially ones who need it? And I, I, you know, so I guess the discussion is, when are we gonna get the help out to the community? Uh, I can remember a young lady, and I told this, this story, uh, yesterday evening, they called me on the phone. And, uh, I believe she was crying. She said, I'm out there with three kids, and I, and I have nowhere to go. And I said, well, you know, I said, what about, uh, pass a letter with the shelter? She said, they don't have room. And there's a lot of people out there hurting, and there's a lot of people who had to move. There's a lot of people who are living with their parents. And so, there's help, we have help, and yet it seem like we're not willing to help. So, I guess the question, I guess since we directing it at our county manager, Lord Kerr, when are we gonna help those peoples? And they said, well, why don't the Commissioners step up? Say, you know, this what we elected them for, that's the reason why we got them, put them in these seats to help us. And it seemed like, you know, he just, we don't care. And I'm gonna just leave with this, and I know I was going on, but one lady said, well, their bills are paid. They're not worrying about mine. It's 'cause if they were in the same situation that we were in, say, you know what? They'd have been passed, they've been distributing that money out. And I said, you probably right. So, what do, what do we tell the people? What do we tell the peoples in Newton County, our peoples? What do we tell them? Say, we gonna wait another year? Another three months? Four months, five months, before we try to help people who, who desperately need help now? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I know we did have a discussion centered around this area back in, uh, August, and we were supposed to be positioning ourselves to begin, uh, processing requests. So, I guess this is a question, uh, for our county manager. Where are we? Because I, I thought, when we had the discussion in August, that we were gonna be in a position to start processing requests or applications or receiving requests from citizens in September. Uh, but here it is, October, and I guess we haven't done so, so. I guess I would like to know, where are we with the process? And how quickly can we move forward to begin to start getting things processed for our citizens?
We, we've put together an RFP, that RFP has been put out to look for a consultant to completely, to manage and administer the program. Once we make that selection, uh, then that whole process will start. And we'll get the, uh, part of the consultant's job will be to gather, will be one, to do an analysis on the community. What does the community want? Get input, get input from you all, get input from the community. Uh, what do we need, you know, along the lines of, what do we need to do? What does the board w- want to see done? Also, to assist the board in developing a budget for how to spend that money. Um, and of course, develop criteria for, uh, determining eligibility and verification, um, so that all of those things can be accomplished. The other thing is, is that, um, we still do not have a final set of guidelines from Treasury Department. I'm also in hopes that we will get those guidelines. We're being told that those guidelines are forthcoming, but they still, we still have no formal guidelines to tell us what is an eligible expense and what is not an eligible ex, the final definition of what's an eligible expense and what it's not. However, you know, we're gonna work within, we're gonna work towards getting some, try to get some better definition from Treasury on that as we work towards the program. We've get, we've got the, the, um, RFP posted now, it'll be about thirty days before that closes. Um, and hopefully, we'll get a good response. As far as the, um, the, uh, the county itself, um, dealing with any of the, uh, being directly involved in the distribution of the money, um, we want to run that, uh, outside of any capital projects that we may undertake. My intention is to utilize the consultant to manager and manage and administer those programs. I think that's the best way to do it. I think a third party will make sure that there's, I think that's the best way to do it. I think a third party will make sure that there's, uh, it's absolutely, um, objective and that, um, there's not, um, that the, all of the guidelines, all of the, the, uh, regulations that are out there would be followed, that there wouldn't be, they would not be subject to any type of local or political pressure, if you will, for any, for any type of, of, of favoritism and that, that the, that program would be administered fairly and objectively. So, um, the county would not be involved except for if it, when it came to, except for when it came to, uh, as I said, capital projects. So, that, that's, that is, that's really, that's where we are.
So, where do we, where did we, because I know when we initially talked about it in August. We talked about if we were gonna go with a consultant, we were gonna have an RFP out by then, and we were gonna have someone selected by September. So, since that didn't happen, where did we fail?
Where did we?
Where did we fail by not meeting that initial timeline?
Well, there's been an awful lot of other, uh, things that were going on. Plus, uh, it took a long time to do the research to put together a good RFP. Uh, this is something new, um, in terms of the type of project this is. There, it took a lot of due diligence to make sure that we came out and provided, um, an RFP that covered all of the deliverables and made sure that we covered all of the, entirely the scope of work that we were looking for. So, it took time to put this, uh, to put it together. And my intention was to, as I said, that I would not be able to begin working on it until we completely finished up everything with a budget and with the, um, and with the millage adoption, which was, was not until the middle of August. I had hoped to get it done sooner, uh, but, um, uh, but it did take a little longer than I expected because of the fact that it was very difficult to get all of the information that I needed to put together a document that I felt would be, uh, understandable and readable and make sure that I had everything out there that I wanted, uh, a prospective, uh, consultant or team to look at so that they knew what we, what I, what we were looking for.
So, based off of the, I guess, the, uh, guidelines that we already have, and this is my last question, Mr. Chairman, based off of the guidelines that we already have, I know from the presentation in August, we did talk about some of the ways that we can utilize it. We can utilize it for rental assistance, we can utilize it for mortgage assistance, we can utilize it for 501(c)(3)'s, we can utilize it for small businesses.
That's correct.
And it sounds like, uh, from what I'm hearing, uh, there are citizens that are, uh, needing this from an emergency perspective. Is there a way while we're waiting in the process, uh, to actually complete the RFP, get someone selected? If we have an emergency situation, do we have the capabilities of, uh, maybe meeting those emergency situations, uh, until we can actually get through that process? Does that make sense? And I don't know if that's possible, and I'm just asking.
No, 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 I, I understand what you're saying, but no, we have not set up anything like that, but there are emergency services available. There is and has been, uh, the rental assistance and, and utility assistance at the state that has been in existence since May that people have been able to take, and can take advantage of. There's, uh, there's that assistance available. There is, you know, there has been a discussion about, um, the necessity for food and all. There are multiple food banks in the county that people can also take advantage of. But no, we have not set anything up for us to distribute money, uh, to anyone. We have not looked at criteria for doing so, for either eligibility or for verifying. We don't have the resources, uh, to verify, uh, someone's eligibility, we've not set up any criteria. So, no, we've not done that. But there are the usual, um, places that they would, that people can go to, um, to seek assistance. There are the, the, um, uh, you know, such as the Salvation Army, such as their churches, their families and so forth. But the county does not have, that's not, again, that's not, uh, generally our role. And so, we have not set up, uh, and are not set up to, uh, to provide that type of service.
That was all I had, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Guys, I want to remind that we are in a, um, a board meeting, please, um, keep your comments minimal, please, thank you. Commissioner Sanders?
Let the words in my mouth and meditation in my heart be acceptable and not sight. This money has been here since May twenty twenty. The government is not gonna send you ten million dollars without instructions. I've already spoke to commissioners in other counties who have already distributed their funds one-on-one. I spoke to congressmen and representatives to get insight. They have, other counties have assisted their citizens with this American Cares money, American Act money. We in Newton County have done nothing. Lord, how much are we gonna be paying for a consultant once hired in thirty days? What is the going price for this consultant?
That I do not know, but I will say this. Yes, there are some counties that have moved ahead. But I would also say that over eighty percent of the counties in the state have not done anything and are waiting for Treasury guidelines. So, while there are some that are moving, particularly, as you mentioned, Fulton, DeKalb, Gwinnett, which are ten times larger than Newton County, they are doing some things, and I agree, I see that. However, we're not the only ones that have chosen to take a very cautious approach and to this so that we don't do things wrong and that we don't end up in a situation where we're having to pay money back. And the answer to your question, no, I do not know how much this is gonna cost, that's part of the fact finding.
Okay. So, how much is our county budget? How much do we manage our county budget? How much is our total county budget?
How much is the total county budget? Seventy-eight million.
Okay, if we can't manage ten million and we're doing a budget for seventy-eight million, wait, let me finish, I didn't cut you off.
Okay, I understand.
If we can manage a budget of ten million and we can't manage a bu, uh, seventy-eight million, we can't manage ten million, that's a problem. And the issue that I'm having here, yes, you're saying certain counties have done certain things, but a lot of counties don't have the need that we have. You have people here that have a need. You have Rockdale who has less constituents than we have, have already assisted, they're right next door, have already assisted. We also mentioned the Salvation Army, who already has done this. So, what we need to be doing is going to those areas who have already done it and get the formula. Work hard, not, work smart, not hard. Go get the formula. You have people who have hired consultants, probably already have this written out versus taking two months to write out a plan or RFP for a consultant, then you're gonna take another thirty days and you have to go through a hiring process, it's gonna be about January before we even get these funds out. And you have citizens who are in need, I can tell you, and the reason why I'm passionate about it, because I see the citizens in my district who are put out of their homes and their, their stuff is on, on the actual lawn. I see it. I don't know if you see it in your area, but I see it, so that's why I'm passionate about it. You have individuals who have light bills who had caught COVID, who could not work. And their light bills in the city of Covington are like eight hundred dollars. They didn't just lay on their behind, they couldn't work because they had COVID. So, there's something that we have to put in place to assist our citizens. We have to be proactive instead of react, that's what I've been saying since we've been, I've been in this position. We are a reactive government in Newton County. We do not plan for anything. And our citizens are hurting and we have to take care of our citizens. We mentioned not only just consultant, we mentioned United Way, we mentioned Salvation Army, where is the information for that? We have not received it, we just keep going with this consultant, which I'm trying to figure out why we keep trying to peg on this consultant? When there's other things that we can be doing right now to help our citizens. And I apologize if I'm passionate about it and you may take it a certain way, but we're in office to help our citizens. And that's what we're supposed to be doing.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lord, I, I'm, I'm trying to understand is, why isn't there somebody in your office who could have handled this? It seems that if, that you inundated with a whole lot of other things. Why couldn't you delegate this to somebody else? Why couldn't you asked in a, um, ask for an attorney? We, we always get Gerard and Davis, which I don't like, and I see it anywhere because, uh, you know, they did certain things to me, four years and a half of investigation. But why couldn't, why couldn't we, we hiring for everybody else, we hiring the right resolutions? And, and, uh, to tell the commissioners what they can and what they can't do, but we can't hire somebody to get this money to the people on track? I mean, get, I mean, what's wrong, that's your job. Your job is for us to come use them. Mr. County Manager said, this is what we want you to do. And it's your job to the best of your ability to get it done. Now, I understand that you got a whole lot, whole lot of, uh, stuff you have to do. But you also can get the resources that you need. You calling for everybody else, these lawyers, why don't you ask this man to go out and set up for you or get you a consultant so we can get this money out to those people? But yet still, another day, more people get put out. Another week, more people get put out. And I get the calls. I ride around, see people stuffing the lawn. And you say, well, let's go to the state, well, the state is, is hard to get, they help a few people, don't help everybody, so they're outside. So, what, I mean, what would you tell these people, sir? Wait another two months, it'll be all right, you'll be okay. What would you tell them? What would you tell these people who are being put outside? It's your job, Lord, to help us. It's your job. They were, we, they were the county, the taxpayers pay you to do.
Right. Commissioner, but they also pay me to run the county. And there's a tremendous number of things that I have to do, plus the fact that I, you know, I have a question for you. Why weren't the, the, there were, there's, there has been assistance available for all of the people who are saying they were getting kicked out of their house and they don't have money and they need help with their utilities? Assistance has been available from the state for months. Why have they not available themselves?
Hey, hey, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hey, hey, guys, hold, hold, one at a time, one at a time.
DCA was here two meetings ago and told you there's millions of dollars available for Newton County residents. Newton County residents are not make, availing themselves of those funds. It's available. Why have they not done that? Why have, have the people who are complaining about having their, their utilities cut off? Have they talked to the utilities? Have they tried to make work a deal? Have they tried to make, uh, make it, uh, a, a, a payment of some kind or get, talk to them so that they can get extended? There has been up until a couple of months ago, a moratorium on evictions. Right now, sitting over in the court, there's less than a couple of hundred dispo cases that are waiting to be heard. So, that does, that tells me there's not thousands of people that are gonna be put on the street. There are people who are in trouble, yes, but there's help available, there's help been available. It's not gonna all be cured because I start, or the county starts handing out dollars. If the mon, the money has been available, why have people not gone to where the money is available to get it? We are try, I am, I have got to be very careful about what the county does, what the county does with this money because if we don't do what's right, it, we are gonna owe the federal government to pay that money back. We're gonna owe the federal government for that. We don't have the criteria set up, I don't have the personnel in order to administer the program. That's why I wanna bring somebody in. In order to hire those people, it's gonna take just as much time to hire those people as it is for me to get a qualified consultant in here. And that's the God's honest truth, as difficult as it is to hire people.
Well, you know, are you through there? So, I can just kind of, um, give my take on what you said. The reason why you don't care is because you don't see these people. You go home and you close your doors and you turn your air conditioner and it's okay until the next day. You don't be around those people when they are placed out, when they're, when they're put outside or when their utility bills are being cut off. The city of Covington, I know the city of Covington, they give you agreement to the next month and then you, you're cut off. I know that, they'll cut you off. And because I paid a rolling net years ago, so, you know, you, we can say, try to make agreement. Do you know how hard it is to get something from the state? Have you applied for anything from the state? No. So, you don't know how hard it is to get something from the state? It's a bunch of talk and a little bit of action. These people are coming to us because we're the one closest to them. We're the one, the one we, they see every day. We go in the restaurant and eat and they tell me, say, well, where might we get some help? So, why can't, I mean, so there's nobody in your office who, who are capable or responsible enough to kind of get this going? Because you're so inundated, you know, with everything, and I, I, I kind of understand that. I don't totally understand it, that can get this going on track. We have lawyers for everything. To be a one, when you say, well, eight hundred thousand dollars. So, then you went back, came and said, it was a little less than that. So, why can't we spend a few extra thousand dollars, get somebody to know what they're doing? Because right now, I think we're lost. We're lost on helping people. That money, to the best of my ability, from the people in other counties, we're supposed to help the people. And we're coming up with a blind ear. We can't see them, we can't hear them.
I've got plenty of people that can do the job, but they're doing their jobs and they don't.
Somebody else.
So, guys, so what, listen, so what we're about to do, um, hold up for one second, what we're about to do, Commissioner, you made your comments. Commissioner Sanders, she had her hand up, she gonna make her comments. And we're not gonna stay on this all night, we finna move on. Uh, Commissioner Sanders, if you would, if, Commissioner Sanders, if you would, go ahead and make your comments. Commissioner, you out of order. Commissioner Sanders, if you would, go ahead and make your comments.
Just to, uh, reiterate a little bit, Lord, in regards to the DCA, that's why I approached you, well, sent the email, that DCA needs to have a location here because a lot of the applications are getting rejected. So, you have people who have applied, but because the applications get rejected, they may have missed something on the application or didn't fill it out correctly. So, in the meantime and between time, they're getting put out of their homes. So, maybe there needs to be something worked out with DCA that if we assist this individual, will we be reimbursed from DCA? That's something you may wanna ask in regards to that, because you have individuals that are being put out and they have applied. And we also know our communication pool in the county is not great. Some of the information is not disseminated out, you heard me say this, from day one, to our citizens. A lot of them last night didn't even know about DCA when we were talking to them last night, it was like, what is that? So, the information is not getting to all of the citizens in Newton County that need the help. So, that might be why we are receiving a low turnout of applications being submitted. Because if we're in a group or a room of people who need assistance and had no idea about that program, then there's a problem. And that's, that's where the problem is. The information is not getting to them.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, thank you, and I guess, do I need a legal opinion on that as well? I just wanna say this, this is the problem. For years, we have been putting people in office who don't care a jack about you. They don't care where you, outdoors, as long as you're not over their house. They don't care, they don't care, because if there was somebody who cared about you, the person who, who are needing, they got all this money in the bank, hey, they'll be doing something. I'm, I'm telling you, the one who can hear me, you know, you better stop just putting folks in there. And you find out that the, uh, uh, Democrat Republicans right there, who sit on this board, who agree with everything, doing everything but helping somebody, got, they're talk good. with everything, doing everything but helping somebody, they talk good, but when time come there and make a motion, they say, "Whoa." But, Lord, say, "Oh, you can't, you can't help, we get sued if the commission make a decision to give the money." And they'll say, "Okay, yeah, we got to go along with it." But he's not in the situation that we're in. We see these peoples every day. We know that they're in need, and yet still, we're holding a blind eye and a closed ear to them. Now, what I believe, they would keep, I'd make a motion, I'd make a motion so you can see who's who. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion. Can I make a motion? I'm asking for a legal opinion at this part.
You would have to make a motion to amend the agenda, then make the motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to make a motion.
I think you need to describe the nature of the motion.
Well, the nature of the motion is to give the County Board of Commissioners, to approve them, for them to approve setting the parameters as far as how the money's going to be distributed and the way it's going to be distributed. Because, Lord, what I heard, and I may have been listening out of my wrong ear, what I heard, he said that we couldn't make that decision as far as how the money is distributed. So he could get it, and ultimately, that would be his decision. And we don't want that. It needs to be the people who you put in office decision.
Guys, again, this is, guys, this is a live board meeting.
Mr. Chairman, make that for a motion.
Can I get a second, please? It's a motion by Commissioner Henderson. Um, I don't know what the motion was.
To give the power back to the Newton County Board of Commissioners to make a decision on how this 10 million dollars should be distributed and set a time on it to be distributed, to be distributed as soon as possible.
Let me try to rephrase it. It would be a motion to amend the agenda, to consider a motion to establish guidelines to distribute ARPA funds. Does that sound right? So this would be a motion to add that motion to the agenda for the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Sanders, you want to? It's a motion by Commissioner Henderson to amend the agenda to add the disbursement of ARPA funds, and it had been seconded by Commissioner Sanders in a discussion. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I guess what I want to get clarity on, is the current process stating that the Board of Commissioners have no say-so in how these funds are going to be allocated? Or is that something that we need to do? Once we get through whatever process the county manager is, are you saying that it comes back to the Board? The Board actually decides what percentage is going to go where, who is going to be allocated to? So is it even, if that's the case, is it necessary to even have this motion? Because the Board has the power to go ahead and say how these funds are going to be dispersed. That's already in the motion, am I correct?
You're out of order, Mr. Chairman. There has been a motion and there has been a second.
And it's discussion.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I also have a discussion, sir.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, Commissioner. What the consultant would do, would hold the community meetings, get the input from the community, get input from you all, assist you all, take all that information, and assist, work with you all to develop a budget, so that you would say, "Two million goes for this, five million for that, 500,000 for what?" To develop a budget. And then you all would decide on that budget, not that they are going to tell you what that budget is, make a recommendation to you, and you all decide the final decision on the budget. I mean, if it, if the Board decided they wanted to spend 10 million dollars on widgets and widgets were eligible, you get to spend the money on widgets. It's not, I'm not telling you, they're not telling you, they're taking the information and assisting you with developing a budget. That's what their intention, that's what part of their work is to do, is to assist with that, not to tell you what to do.
So in layman's terms, the motion really isn't necessary to have because this Board will already have the authority and the power to be able to determine how much of these funds are going to go to where. For example, if we decide, "Hey, I want 5 million dollars of the 10 million dollars to go towards rental assistance," or "I want 10 million to go towards rental assistance and mortgage assistance." So this Board already has the power to be able to say where these funds are going to be allocated, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on, I got, I got, I got you, I got you coming. I got Commissioner Cowan, I got Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been sitting here listening to this. I understand, and the federal government, God bless them, are notorious for throwing money at situations and then say, "Y'all figure out what to do with it." And then, and I'll give you a good example here in just a few minutes, you'll remember it. And then, when you don't spend it like they said you're supposed to spend it, because they implement the regulations later, they come back and say, "Wait a minute, you did it wrong. We're going to hold you accountable, either pay the money back or somebody goes to jail." And if you remember the neighborhood stabilization money back in 2007, what a headache that was, and I think Newton County got caught in some of that fiasco then. Okay. Point to be made, though, we have the ability here to, and I understand Mr. Kerr's wanting to hire a consultant to do this, but I think you've got the ability here among your Board members to go ahead and put a policy together and some guidelines. And the reason I say that, you don't just come up here and just make decisions on giving this and this and this. You better have some guidelines in place, because the federal government's going to want to see it, especially if you get in trouble. So I strongly suggest that we put together a policy, a procedure, guidelines, and then once there's an appropriation of money, you set down the priorities of what those are done. And then you establish a separate banking account with Mr. Kerr and the Finance Department for review and audit trail of all that, so that we don't get, because quite frankly, the way y'all going about it right now, I wouldn't put my name on none of it, because I don't plan on going to jail for none of y'all. So that's how I feel about it, just letting you know.
Thank you. What you're seeing is, is a Republican-Democrat changing on you. They're changing on you because they're saying, "Well, I won't put..." Nobody on this board had to put the name on anything. It's your personal right to put your name on it. Several times condemnation, I wouldn't sign it, because I didn't believe in putting somebody who had counsel at their home. I wouldn't go along with that. And it wasn't this board, but there were times that I've been on the board. What we're seeing here now is that you have people who need help, and they open, hey, they got blind ears, blind eyes, and they don't want to see and figure out a way to help you. They make every excuse it is in the world and give away our powers, because if it were did so perfect the way they were talking a few minutes ago, it would have been done. So they ain't doing, they're not trying to expedite it, they're just trying to prolong it. So, and that's not right. So, I say it again, and you know, it'll be what it is. Stop putting peoples in office when you need help. What you do, they turn their back on you. They come up here and talk all this talk and say, "Let's do it." We had asked our County Manager, we gave him an order, well, somewhat of an order, I guess, an order. We asked him to go ahead and do this for us. Now, if we were building a fire station, we were on that other side of nowhere, 5 million dollars, we would build it and have it in the budget. We go out and borrow the money and build it, if we wanted to build it. And we did build it. And I supported it, because that was what the people wanted in that area. I supported it. But when it comes to you, if it comes to us helping somebody and being outdoors, oh, we got to do all kind of. They found out ways. Every officer that came, they came across, they figured it out. They also figured out how to man a fire station. You know, you paid 5 million dollars to build it, then you got to pay people to be in it, about seven firefighters to be in there, then you got to buy a new fire truck, and all that stuff you had to buy, but yet you can't distribute 10 million... Now, a fire truck, what, about 500, 700,000 dollars? 750,000 dollars. But they can't figure out how to help you, and they know you need help. They have every reason but to say, "We got to help." Now, I believe if we were to direct the attorney up here from Gerard and Davis to go out and fix it, he would. It wouldn't be but another, maybe another 200,000 dollars, probably going to end up at the end of the day, but he would fix it. There's no reason, there's no excuse that you're not getting help. It's, "Well, we don't want to go to jail." Nobody wants to go to jail. But, you know, there's nobody going to jail for having somebody who is in need. There's nobody going to jail helping a homeless, you got the money to help them. They want to speed the process. We done gave our official duty to provide a service to you. We done gave it away. We done gave it away. We done, we said, "Well, you do what you want to do and when you want to do it." And that's what basically happened. All the, my motion was for them to expedite this process. Stop giving our power away. Give it back to us so we can help you. And they made a huge excuse. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Sanders.
My comment is kind of combining with Commissioner Henderson and Commissioner, Commissioner Ronnie. There's so much going on, I'm losing, trying to thought here. But I agree with Commissioner Henderson, because it's, all it's doing is expediting the process. I understand where, Lord, it's coming from, wanting a consultant, but we are behind the game. We talked about this in, actually, we talked about this way before, because remember, I sent the email when I first found out we got the funds. Other one found out we got the funds from another commissioner, which I told you guys. And he was like, "Yeah, we do have these funds." So that was way before May. So we knew this money was coming in February, March. So we have to get in front of the issue. So this motion is to expedite the process, like Commissioner Henderson said. We're not going to jail giving people money for homeless and so forth. We have a policy in place, like Commissioner Cowan stated. And we are the policymakers, we are the legislation. We can make those policies. Let's do our job and do what we have to do.
You want to go ahead?
Yeah, you all make really good points. One of the things that I'll point out, because I've dealt with a lot of other governments that are, that are working through the ARPA fund process, is that like Mr. Kerr said, it is complicated. What you need in order to, whether you administer it in-house or whether you contract it out, you have to have in place guidelines, you have to have in place application procedures, you have to have in place standards to determine who is eligible and who isn't eligible, and those need to be thought out based on your community. The income level that one needs to qualify for ARPA funding may be different in Newton County than it is in the City of Atlanta. The amount of rental assistance available may be different in Newton County than it is in Rockdale County, depending on what your market rents are. The family size that you need to consider may be different based on different jurisdictions. And that's what these consultants are able to do for you, is those studies that you probably don't have personnel in-house to conduct, you probably don't have personnel in-house who can receive, evaluate, and process those applications. And a lot of jurisdictions are utilizing either contractors or outside agencies. I know the City of Atlanta uses the United Way to administer their rental assistance program, but they don't just hand the money over to the United Way. They give the United Way all of the eligibility criteria, all of the application processes, and it really becomes a check the box. What you do not want to happen, and I think this goes to Commissioner Cowan's comment, is you don't want somebody making a subjective decision about who gets the money and who doesn't get the money. You don't want it to be, "Well, you, this, this property owner, this resident, sounds like they're in a really bad shape. This one sounds like he's got it together, we're going to give the one in bad shape money." You need to base it on objective criteria. It needs to be based on income, family size, how long somebody's been out of work, what's their rent situation. And that, in order to do that, so that you can submit to the Treasury Department your audited financial statements, because you have to do that. You're not going to get audited by the Treasury Department, you audit yourselves. You show them where all of your money is gone, you show them how it's been administered. And that is, that is a Herculean task. And Mr. Kerr is also right, a lot of local governments haven't touched their ARPA funds, because I think there is a, there is a concern about the manner in which the federal government, I mean, we've all seen the federal government do whiplash, you know, just give us all whiplash. One day they say, "Do this," the next day they say they don't do this. So I think a little caution is a good thing to do, and I would suggest that you make sure whatever you put into place, you answer all of those questions and don't rush in and say, you know, you don't want your policy to say, "Anyone who needs help can get it." Because that's, that's setting you up for failure, that's setting you up for the inability to help anybody, because you'll lose your funding. So keep that in mind, you know, I think, I think, I can tell you, Henry County has a consultant that did, that did all of the work, drafted a policy, the Board of Commissioners approves the policy. And then the Board of Commissioners allocated some money towards paying employees, they allocated some money to helping small businesses, they allocated some money to helping individuals. That allocation was done by the Board of Commissioners, and the qualifications were established by the Board of Commissioners. The processing of applications was handled, a combination of a consultant and in-house. And that was a massive undertaking, and it continues to be a massive undertaking. And I would suggest that every jurisdiction that is administering either partially or fully their own ARPA funds would tell you it is a massive undertaking. So I don't, I don't have an answer, I don't have a solution for you, I just wanted the Board to be aware of that. It is, this is a big undertaking. It is a substantial amount of money, and this money does have strings attached to it. This isn't just free money. You are restricted on how you can administer the money, and the Treasury Department hasn't given us all the answers that we all want. They haven't told us when it's enough and when it's not enough. So we are flying a little bit blind.
Now, I got, I got-
I have a question for the attorney for me.
No, sir, I got Commissioner Mason and then Commissioner Edwards. Yeah, come back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And maybe this may be a question for our county attorney. Does this Board have the jurisdiction to set a policy in place to prevent any type of evictions or utility cutoff notices? Do we have the jurisdiction or the power to be able to do that countywide or not?
No. That exceeds the county government's.
Okay.
Yeah. Commissioner Edwards. I'm sorry, are you done?
Yes, I'm done, that was my question. Oh, actually, I did have one more. I have heard too that there have been some counties where they do set up another account, so they're not utilizing their own account, that they are setting out an account and they're only distributing those funds out of that separate account just for auditing purposes. So I have heard that that is definitely what's happening as well.
Your ARPA funds will almost certainly be segregated into a different account.
Okay.
Whether they're actually in a different bank account or whether they're just accounted for differently, but they will be accounted for by themselves separately. And another, another thing I want to say to your earlier point, when you ask, "Can this Board or will this Board have the opportunity to set the guidelines?" Not only do you have the opportunity, you have the obligation to. You have not, Newton County has not and should not adopted a policy that says, "County Manager, spend the money how you deem appropriate." The County Manager does not have the authority. She just decide where money goes. You set a budget every year, you have a purchasing ordinance that sets forth how you buy things, you tell the County Manager how to spend all of your money. You must also tell the County Manager how to spend this money. So not only do you have that opportunity, you must do that before that money can be spent.
So we do have- So we do have the power to determine where these funds are going to go and set the criteria of who's going to receive these funds?
Within sort of the, within the yellow lines, the ARPA funds
Sure.
authorize, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. It is to the, to the attorney. Uh, you mentioned Henry County. Correct. So have, have they set up their policy, you know, they distributing their money or they just waiting like we are?
No, I think Henry County has distributed some of their money. I don't think they've distributed all the money.
Yes.
I don't want to speak because I don't know all of it.
Well, we have distributed none of ours. And it was suggested months ago, I think, even, uh, uh, Commissioner, this is true Commissioner, Demond, I'm sorry. I'm a little slow, I'm tired. Uh, he had mentioned that it was in September that we'd asked our, our county manager to do something and nothing had been done. That was the purpose for that motion, to expedite it and stop giving our powers away for somebody else to make decisions and prolong stuff. It was, it's supposed to work. The county manager works at the pleasure of the board, not the board at the pleasure of the county manager. It was supposed to be. I heard what you said and you absolutely right. We tell, uh, the county manager what he should do. That hasn't happened. We asked him to do something and he didn't do it. And now here we are again. So we gave our powers away and came, he said, well, said I had to do this, I had to do- He should have told us then, said, I got too much work on my plate. I got too much on my plate. That we need to, for y'all to hire somebody or, or get an attorney or somebody, somebody to help me. And this we've been doing.
Well, I, I can tell you-
But still, we're here. And may I please, uh, uh, complete my stop, please, sir? And so if we're asking someone to do something and they're not doing it, so what do you do? You say, well, hey, just, uh, you got to make good plans. We're not, I'm not after plans. I'm not putting nobody else, I'm not after plans. I'm after doing what we need to do in order to get this money out. And so far, we haven't did nothing. And it's going to be another six months. You're going to come back with the same thing. Oh, uh, I'm just, I'm inundated, I need six more months. And so I don't want that to happen to these people. And, and you shouldn't want it, Mr. Chairman, or you shouldn't want it, Demond. You shouldn't want that. You should want it to be expedited. These are your people too. And so, you know, I mean, do what you, what you will. But you're hurting the same folk that we took an oath to protect and serve.
That's a, that's a motion I'm for. We're going to vote it up or vote it down. I don't even know what the motion is. Yeah. The motion is to-
To amend the agenda, to consider a motion to, to, uh, establish guidelines to distribute ARPA funds.
All right. All in favor? All opposed?
Okay. Let me understand this. Are we asking a motion to have the county manager expedite a process? Or are we generating this among the Board of Commissioners?
You, right now, you've amended the agenda. So I think now that motion should be taken up. Because that, the motion to amend the agenda-
Yeah, just, just allow it to be put on the agenda.
So now we have to do all of this over again. But I think you've adequately discussed-
Okay, so we're just asking this to put it on the agenda? Okay. All right.
So now it's on the agenda. J.C., I mean, Commissioner Henderson, I'm sorry, Commissioner Henderson. Okay. So it is fifteen B. I think fifteen B. Fifteen B. Commissioner, would you like to state your motion?
First, I'd like to ask the question to the county manager. The motion is, we, the motion would be to expedite this at its earliest convenience, even if you have to go out and, and hire an attorney, maybe this gentleman here from Gerard and Davis, or whomever, to expedite it. So that we can go ahead and, and, and do this what Commissioner Cowan had talked about. He said that you, uh, we wanted a plan of sort, I think. So how long would it take to do, for you to get somebody? Maybe your staff, hire somebody and your staff to get this to the point where we can show the people, tell the people that we're going to be able to do the application on a certain day because-
To do what? Do you want-
We want-
You want to give-
For you to-
That's what I need to know.
Well, that's what I'm trying to tell you. I'm trying to tell you. We want you to, to expedite the application process.
For?
For disbursement of the monies. We asking that you go out and get the help that you need because you told us that you didn't have the help. You said that you were so inundated.
So you want me to expedite hiring somebody to disperse the money?
I want to hire somebody to help you get the, uh, what we need quicker. Another six months not going to do it. These people want to help now. Why can't you hire a lawyer? To come in and help you set it up? While you're doing the, uh, uh, the process, I guess, for, for the, uh, process of giving it away. Because right now, we're not giving anything. We was in September, you supposed to brought us something back. And Lord, you didn't bring us nothing.
Well, Commissioner, I just want to be clear. So you want me to have expedite the process of giving money to somebody, but I'm not sure who? Is that to individuals?
Let me say this.
Or for rent?
Guys, guys, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it. This is my last time. Um, guys and all this, this is my last time addressing this. This is a public meeting. Please treat it like one. Commissioners, Mr. Kerr, God, this is a public, God, this is a public meeting. Please treat it like one. All right? Are, are we good? We good?
Who are you talking to me? Are you talking to all you-
I'm talking to everybody. Are we good?
Hey, I haven't, I haven't made outburst at all.
Yes, sir, I'm fine. I just need clarity.
Uh, this, what's our, what's the attorney name is here?
Patrick.
I would like to make a motion for Mr. Patrick to work with Lloyd Kerr, our county manager, to expedite, doing as quick as possible to try and come up with a, um, process so that we can disperse this money to our citizens who desperately need it. Well, see, this problem is Lloyd, he's, he don't know what we want. He has an idea of what, what is needed. We want somebody to help him to get to, get us where we need to be at.
Let me, let me suggest this. I, I am no more qualified than anyone else on the face of this earth to administer your ARPA funds.
Okay, well, okay.
I don't think a lawyer is going to be the right-
Well, okay, I got, I hear you, I, I hear you, I hear you. I would like to make a mo- I would like to withdraw that motion. Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, if I'm- Just so you can get a second, I have to withdraw. I, I want to- I would like to make a motion to, uh, utilize a counter attorney that we already have working for the shared enforcement and for the tax assistance office to, um, come in and assist Mr. Kerr in expedite, expediting this money to the people. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, for Mr. William Thomas Creed to come in and help Lloyd Kerr get us as was, as quick as possible with his services and help, to help us get that money out to the people.
Yes, sir, can I get a second, please? After we get a second, you can. Um, it's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Sanders. Discussion.
Let me, let me, okay, so we, we're getting an attorney to assist Lloyd with the process?
Yes. It seems, if it's from me, my perspective, that he can't seem to do it.
So how-
He needs some help. He would help and guide him in to send up the process in order to get this money where it need to be at and so, so that we can get it out to the people.
Okay, so how about, I agree with, I agree with what you're saying. What about the committee of, remember, I mean, your, your original motion was the board to come together with decision and policies?
He would bring back a recommendation that we would look at.
Okay.
And then so we can distribute the money.
Okay.
So, okay, so it's been motion and second. Um, any more discussion? Uh, Commissioner Mason and then Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I think we've kind of stated that it, it isn't wise for us, this board, to relinquish any of our power to anyone else to actually decide where these funds are going to go. That is the responsibility of this board, which is what we stated, that that's what we are going to do. Uh, what I would like to ask, if our county manager can give us a specific date of how soon we can have someone, whether it's a consultant, whether it is, uh, a nonprofit organization, whoever it is, what, how quickly, what is the date that we can have that we can begin this process? Not to relinquish our power to anybody else, not for anybody else to make the decision on where these monies are going. This board is responsible for making that decision on where these monies are going and how they're going to be allocated. What I would like to see is how quickly can we get a date to get somebody? Somebody that's knowledgeable, somebody who knows how to help us get to that next point.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this, this is, this is discussion, right? So I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to ask Lloyd a question, uh, uh, about an alternative. So we're thirty days out from a consultant. If we had a consultant tomorrow in order to expedite this whole process, i- is there any way that we could have the consultant meet with the commissioners and interface with commissioners and, and, and bypass a staff and go straight to the agencies, I believe Commissioner Sanders mentioned, Salvation Army, uh, Goodwill, maybe? I don't, I don't know if they're eligible, uh, organization or not. And use those organizations already in, in place to expedite the whole process and bypass a staff? Um, that way he could, that, that, that consultant could interface with us and use those agencies to distribute those funds? Yeah, I think that's absolutely possible. If that's what the board wants to do, if they, if you want to utilize a, and you want to name a particular 501(c)(3) that you want to utilize, that's fine. Tell me that and I'll amend the RFP to, to, with that. So that then, uh, for that particular, for that particular, well, for, because, um, since there are multiple things, I'm assuming, and I'm making assumption here, but I'm assuming that you want to use them for the assistant, for rental assistance, utilities assistance, or assistance to individuals. Is that, is that what you're talking, because assistance to businesses would be different. Assistances, assistance to other groups would be a little different than that. You wouldn't necessarily want to use a, the Salvation Army, but, and I'm assuming that's what you're telling me. Is that what you're telling me? So, yeah, the- I mean, we can do that, yeah. The, the consultant, in terms of the business, um, a, a consultant or, or intermediary would, would work with, um, the, the, the businesses or, or work with maybe other counties to discover how they're, how they're distributing the funds to the businesses. But as far as the citizens go, I believe we have established organizations or agencies in our communities now that can help, uh, and, and eliminate a lot of the overhead, um, in terms of, um, now, we're going to, we're, we're, you're going to pay somebody to distribute this money no matter what, whether it's on our staff or, uh, uh, Salvation Army or, or anybody. Well, you're going to, yeah, that's correct, because there's administrative fees you're going to have to pay. But I feel like we, we need someone, whether it be a, a county attorney or a consultant that is versed in how these funds can be legally used. Jail's just not a favorable proposition for me either. So, um, you know, I want to, or a fine or having even pay it back is not good for the citizen. So I, I just wanted to offer something else up as a, as a discussion, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and this is to Commissioner Demond. I wasn't saying that, that Mr. Creed would come in and tell us what to do. What I was saying was that we need somebody to help guide Lloyd into, um, go ahead and expedite and just brings us some back to the board ASAP as soon as possible so that we can act on it and stop the bleeding in our community. So, um, at this point, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw my motion. And the reason why I'm withdrawing my motion, because I believe that there, there might be a, a motion that if we could agree like we're supposed to agree, a motion that would be better suit what the board members may want. I made the informal motion.
It's been motion by, um, Commissioner Henderson and second by, um, Commissioner Sanders to withdraw their motion, oh, well, yeah, his motion. All in favor? His motion is withdrawn. Commissioner Sanders.
So I would like to make a motion to where the board comes together. As Commissioner Cowan stated, we come together to set the policies and where we want these funds to be distributed. In a workshop, it could be a public hearing or whatever it may be. We at least come together to come with a plan and decide on where these funds will be distributed. Talk about the policies and we get with our county attorney to create those policies, to put them in place in the legal jargon that it should be in, to be able to distribute these funds, to expedite it quickly so we can get those process, get those funds out. Do I need to attach a date to it for right now for the public hearing? Let's, oh, wow. Within, uh, two weeks? Is that good enough for everybody on the board? Within two weeks, we come together for a public hearing? Or is that?
Commissioner Edwards.
Oh. We could do it tomorrow, I didn't know what-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, guys, hold on.
I would, I will be gone for seven days, starting tomorrow. After that-
Okay, so within two weeks? Okay. So within two weeks, we come together to discuss a, uh, the date from two weeks? I don't have a calendar in front of me, I can pull it up. Do you have, Mr. Allen, can you, are you able to see what two weeks from? So that we can do it at the six o'clock, we can do it in the six o'clock special call meeting?
We can do it, um, wait, I think- Let's do it, let's do it November first.
Okay, adding November first.
That's Monday.
All right. Monday, November first. Public special call meeting, here we go. Um, at, we want to do six or seven? They're asking me what time? Seven? Seven o'clock?
So is that, is that, we'll send it out, we'll send it out, we'll send the time out.
Yeah, okay. I'm thinking seven because the citizens will be able to come out more to listen, because they want to come. So I'm thinking seven o'clock is probably a better time for traffic and those citizens who want to come in and hear. So I, I might go ahead and just say seven o'clock.
Commissioner Cowan.
Commissioner Sanders, would you be willing to consider a modification of that to where instead of be the whole, well, between now and what day was that? November first? Between now and then, that there be a subcommittee of the Board of Commissioners appointed uh, to go ahead and look at, um, the propose, what's going on in Henry County, DeKalb and some of those other places? Get some documents ready so that, and maybe put together a model for the Board of Commissioners to consider. And then, um, it basically, you have something to look at and discuss.
Would you consider that?
What Commissioner Cowan stated, I would like to add that to my motion. I don't know if you were able to get all that, Ms. Nally.
Is there, is there a second? There's a second? Okay. It's been motioned by Commissioner Sanders and second by Commissioner Henderson that we have a meeting, a special call meeting on the first of November. And before we have that meeting, there'll be a committee put in place to, um, look at different counties and come back and give their findings to, um, I don't care. Um, this board. Any more discussion? All in favor? All in, okay, all in favor. It passes 5-0. Thank you. Uh, next, we have alcohol license. I'm sorry? Yeah, the first readings. I guess that's, uh, Berjane, Berjaning Group LLC DBA, Valerio, Valero Food Mart, 11280 Brown Bridge Road, Covington, Georgia 316. Owner, uh, Mr. Patel, District 3, first reading. First reading, SM Pony Express, Inc., 1820 Highway 11, Covington, Georgia 314. Owner, um, Mr. Patel, also on this one, District 1, first reading. This is opportunity now, item number 16, the citizens' comments. This is opportunity that we allow citizens to come up and make, uh, comments. You have three minutes to do so. You may come at this time. Please state your, um, your name for the record, please. Guys, remember, you have three minutes.
My name is Barbara Ferman and I live on Whitlin Road in Covington, Georgia. At the last meet, it was two meetings ago, we talked about a resident who has basically a zoo. And she has alligators. I think she mentioned three. Now, across the street from her, directly across the street from her, is a resident who has cows. Behind that is the Newton High School. I live down the block from her. I cannot outrun an alligator. The llamas and the other little animals that I happen to see as I drove past her house is okay. I feel endangered by having these alligators. They should not be in this area, three of them. I know I cannot outrun them. They will go after the cattle, they will go after the children. Then that whole area is residential. If she wants the llamas and the other animals, that's okay. Alligators should not be in this area. And I do not want them to approve. She can have the animals, but get rid of the alligators. That on five acres of land, residential, is not secure being in whatever kind of cage she has. That should not be allowed in this area. They could even come down here. And I don't know if any of you have ever seen how fast they do run. I know personally, I cannot outrun them. So, I motion that if she wants to keep them, fine, but get rid of the alligators. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Yeah, pretty much know me, Alicia Brown. I just wanted to say that, um, I wanted to express how hard it is to live in Newton County. Some of us go to work, some of us are, everything that comes along with a job, everything that comes along with owning a home, the yard, the groceries, the cleaning, just everything, everything that comes along with taking care of your children, everything that comes along with just life. And then you have to have, what, that's about, if I keep going, that's about eight jobs down. You have a, a ninth job. That ninth job would be babysitting the commissioners. I feel it's hard to live in Newton County. It stresses the citizens so bad when you feel like you cannot trust your commissioners to do what's best for your county and what's best for constituents so that we can live comfortably. We have to make sure that we are coming to these meetings and doing this and doing that and writing letters and that, just to make sure, it's very stressful. And so, I just want you all to sometimes think about, you know, yes, you have a job. I know that COVID is going on and this, all the world is in uproar. But think about, you know, even before COVID, all the things that we have been subjected to. You know, the pulling, the fighting, the left and the right, just District 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. It's, it's just ridiculous. You know, I'm, I'm, I thank y'all, a lot of y'all have done good things. Nobody's putting you down on, you know, whatever you think. But at some point, y'all gotta, you know, get to a point where you change, want to change Newton County for the best and go the same way. It's just, it's too much, it's too stressful to live here to feel like you have a ninth job to come and babysit someone because you're hoping they have your best interest at heart and do the right thing for you, and they don't. Or maybe they do and they have obstacles. But if, if you do have obstacles, just explain it, which you do sometimes. But other times, it's just like, you know, it's, we, we don't, we don't know what all is really going on. You know? So, just explain it a little bit more. Help us and do what's right in a lot of instances. Do what's right. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Carla Hooper. I live at 45 Carmody Circle in Covington, Georgia. I've been a resident there for almost twenty years. I actually came here for another reason, but I realize I have to comment on something else as well. I'm glad the county manager has returned. I was really taken back by the interchange that just occurred. I've been in nonprofit for twenty years. I've worked at Emory University School of Public Health. I've worked at CARE, which is a national NGO. And I'm currently an executive director of, of the Diabetes Association. We received over a quarter of a million dollars in CARE's funding. We spent that money in two months and served over thirty-five hundred people. We were audited and we met every criteria with a staff of three persons. Where there's a will, there's a way. There's legitimate concern about being cautious, but there's a difference between caution and apathy and lack of movement. So, I am here to offer my services free of charge as a citizen of Newton County to serve on, to talk with you commissioners, to talk with anyone on the criteria to spend the federal funds. I had the same concerns, but I met the criteria. What I heard you say was, is, I have daughters. What I heard you say was, if my daughter says, "Mom, you have money for my college fund, can I have it?" And, but I tell my daughter, "No, go to your grandmother." When you refer to the state funding and other funding for people who live in Newton County, that's the same as me telling my daughters, although I have money for your college fund, I want you to go to another entity to get it, although I have money allocated for you. So, I respectfully ask you to work with people such as myself. As Commissioner Sanders says, all you have to do is look and see what other counties and cities are doing and duplicate. We did it in less than three months with a small staff. And Commissioner Sanders, what I really came to talk about, and I'll talk with you further offline, you did return my message about the 5G tower that has been placed on Kirkland Road. I'm not sure when that was approved, but my question to this board, well, how did that benefit the citizens of Newton for that to get approved during a pandemic when people were quarantined, burying their family members, and dealing with COVID-19? When I look outside of my subdivision, I see the eyesore of a 5G tower. For the past twenty years, that side of District 3 has been inundated with unnecessary utilities, trash, and it's time for it to end. So, we'll talk offline, because you are, have been helpful. But I am here to help get that CARE's money spent, because it can be spent.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Good evening again. My name is Ashanti Bell and I live at 81 19 Moore Street in Covington. And my comment basically is concerning the same thing, the funds. And you made statements, Mr. Kerr, about, um, applying for DCA, applying for this, applying for that. I took off my mask because I wanted you to see my face and the seriousness in my face. I'm a single mother. I work hard for my children. I don't ask nobody for nothing. I've applied for DCA. That's when I was living in Houghton, that was twelve years. I received a letter, nothing was available. That's what I was told, no funds were available. I don't know what you heard or who you talked to, but I went even now to Salvation Army, Faith Works, different entities that's supposed to have funds to help. Nobody has anything or is able to do anything. So, my question to you is, have you ever rolled up your street or your corridor and seen people's stuff sat outside or being sat outside because they didn't have the money to pay their rent? I don't think so. Me, as a single mother, I've had to sit up at night and cry and worry about how I'm gonna meet this because I had to make sure that my children's needs were met. I mean, you know, it's not fair to citizens. And then you have senior citizens back here who I'm also speaking for that live around me who need that help. They have to pay homeowners association fees, other things, and that's not even include the necessities. So, just think about those things before you make statements such as, where is it going, what is it doing, apply for this, apply for that. We have done these things and there's nothing, so. That's all. And then lastly, I would like to say, because I know from experience, anytime the government issues money, as it was stated, I believe, there are guidelines set in place. The government not gonna give me twenty-five dollars without telling me this is for this. So, just be fair about it, because you have people out here who are hurt and people out here who need it, people out here who are not just concerned about wanting the money just to spend it or just to pocket it. They're actually hurting citizens whose homes are in jeopardy, children are in jeopardy.
Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Commissioner Cowan, I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Edwards.
Uh, no, the, Mr. Chairman, thank you. No, the only thing I had was I wanted to make, um, citizens aware. I, I, for some reason, and this has been happening for a while, for some reason, I just noticed this week, it's over on Industrial Boulevard and, and some of our more industrial areas, um, that if you know somebody that's looking for work, there are help warning signs, they, there are signs everywhere. And I'm not talking about fast food stores. I'm talking about, um, good, reasonable, uh, quality employment. So, uh, I, I would encourage our citizens. I put it on my Facebook page, um, I put, put it on my Facebook page once or twice in terms of vacancies at a particular location. I know it's the post office, so if you know anybody in need of a job, there, there are lots and lots of them out there right now. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Sarah. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to take this opportunity to thank everyone for participating in the movie in the park that took place at Denny Dawes this past summer. We did July, August, uh, and we were supposed to do it the end of September, but we had to postpone and, uh, have that at the beginning of October. Uh, we had great turnout, great movies. We're excited about that and we want to kind of continue that, uh, in the future as well. Um, I also want to bring to the attention, um, I recently started the Cleanup Newton Project. We talk about waste and trash and things of that nature. And so, what I've done is, because in District 2, we have the highest density population, uh, and so, we probably get the most litter, uh, out of all five districts. I took it upon myself to actually start the Cleanup Newton Project. Uh, we had another successful cleanup just this past, uh, or on October the 9th. Uh, we had ten bags of litter. Uh, we also had forty old tires, uh, that we found. Uh, we are doing this once a month. So, I would like to encourage, uh, all of our citizens, no matter what district you're in, if you see a specific area that you see there's a lot of litter, take the opportunity to help, you know, uh, this is our community. Take pride in our community. Uh, and so, I did start a Facebook page, the Cleanup Newton Project. Uh, if you are doing anything in your district, in your area, please feel free to take photos, share those photos. Uh, and let's kind of help motivate everybody to kind of work together as a community where we can keep our community clean. Also, um, I've also partnered with another 501(c)(3) organization where we give away free food at Denny Dawes Park every second and fourth Thursday of the month. So, if you know anybody, uh, that is in need, uh, we want to be there to help support and take care of them, uh, in that, and we get an enormous amount of food. Uh, sometimes we actually don't give it all away, uh, during that food giveaway. So, it is taken to our unsheltered, to our homeless shelter. So, we do take it there. Or we try to find other places where we can actually, uh, distribute those foods if we don't give them all out on that day. So, every second and fourth Thursday of the month, uh, we're doing that. Also, uh, we're having a Oktoberfest at Denny Dawes Park again on October the 23rd, 2021, from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM. So, we want to invite everybody to come out, the community to come out to that. The last time, the actual vendors that are sponsoring and putting this event on, the last time, I think they had about forty vendors there. Uh, and it was a huge, huge success. And so, I'm sure that it'll probably be that large, um, again, because of the following of these particular vendors. Uh, so, we wanted to invite everybody out on October 23rd from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM. It's on a Saturday, uh, at Denny Dawes Park. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders.
I just want to take this opportunity to, uh, inform everyone. As we stated earlier, Pink View Heights, I know she just left, but I want to, uh, commend those in my district and also beyond who are supporting breast cancer awareness, which is a disease that's really dear, near and dear to my heart as far as awareness. I lost my mom to breast cancer and also my father to multiple leukemia, which is also a form of breast cancer. And I had a scare about four years ago and had to have surgery as well. So, I would just want to give you some facts. One in eight women will come in contact with breast cancer. And it's also high in our African-American women because of awareness, because we don't go to the doctor, we don't do breast self-examinations, and we don't take this disease very seriously. So, I'm taking this time and opportunity, my four minutes, to commend my, those who actually are supporting this disease and also to alert every woman in this room and man, male in this room, to get your self-examinations and also take this disease very seriously, because there's a high rate of women who are dying from breast cancer and it can be stopped if we just get self-examinations and also make it a point to put breast cancer awareness in the forefront. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just, I just want to take this opportunity and, and, and be brief. Maybe a little bit more than brief. First of all, you know, I want to appreciate, I appreciate and thank the people who came out to the church last Monday evening, or, um, at the church, you know, in my, in my district. And it was so many people came out and it was so, it was so many people standing outside and what they wanted, they wanted help. And we're trying to the best of our ability to give help. Go out and vote. If you need to write, call me and I'll take you to vote. I would like to thank the people from District 2 who came over to the church. I like, I like to thank the people from District 3.
I like to thank the people from District Three. I like to thank, it was a few from District Five who came to that particular meeting who wanted help, especially the people in District Four. And the preachers who promised that we're gonna stand together, we're gonna make this happen for our citizens. We're gonna, we're gonna make sure that they get this assistance and they start a whole year of registration, because it's gonna be hard times coming. And lastly, if you're a felon and you need somebody to help you get back your right to vote, call me. We got the recipe to help you so you can vote. Together, we can make a difference and together we will. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just want to say thank you to all the people that got out and helped clean up District Five. I'm sorry I was not able to be there, I was in Baton Rouge. But thank y'all for helping out. And I look forward to a great bicentennial this year, so, you know, and the lady that mentioned a while ago about cooperation amongst the board. We're getting there. We're, we will, we will get there. Sometimes it just takes a while for groups to work themselves out. And we'll get there. But thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Guys, we do have a need for executive session tonight, personnel matters. I seek a motion that we move into executive session. We will not be taking a vote tonight. It was motion by who? By Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Edwards, all in favor? We stand in the executive session.